Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners' May the First meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend Morris if he'd come forward for an invocation. Reverend Morris, thank you for being here. Let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and as always, on behalf of the North Dare Ministerial Association, thank you for the opportunity to be with you in this way. Will you pray with me? God of many names, source of all that is, great love that will not let us go. As we enter into this time when these stewards of our community's resources and values make their deliberations and decisions, we know that they may find themselves seeking to hold many sharply differing points of view in balance. And so I call on us first to pause and to begin on common ground in gratitude to you. Dear one, we give thanks for the many blessings in each of our lives and in the life of our community. We give thanks for the gift of life in all its fullness, for the beautiful place in which we live, for everything that makes this fragile coastal home of ours a blessing to so many people from so many places. We give thanks for the wisdom in each of our faiths, which guides us to the best within ourselves and in our world. Holy one, we give thanks also for those who give so much of their time and labor and imagination in leadership and in service to this county and to its people. This gathering is an act of faithful stewardship, and we give thanks for the hard-won right to choose our own leaders, to choose our own course, and to strive always to make our community better for all its people. May those who have taken up the mantle of leadership in this great work be guided by the divine call of all faiths to give voice to the voiceless, to bring justice and comfort to the suffering and to respect and support those whose needs and whose very lives are too often disregarded because of accidents of birth, because of race, or wealth, or social standing. May these leaders of ours, and indeed may each and every one of us present tonight, be reminded that the greatest challenges that confront us as human beings are often what have been called "right-right dilemmas." When legitimate interests, needs, and concerns of good people come into conflict, in such times may we always be reminded to begin from a place of respect and grace toward one another in recognition of our kinship. May our leaders, and may we all listen with open hearts and open minds. May we dare to allow ourselves to be touched by what we hear. May our hearts and minds guide us toward the best possible solutions for the good of all. May these our leaders, and may we all be guided in all our choices by a vision of a future in which the blessings of life and of this place are nurtured, protected, and shared by all for all the many generations to come. This we ask in the name of that highest truth which each of us holds holy and sacred, in that name which we each hold and speak in our hearts. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Morris. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Folks, I am very pleased to report to you this evening that Commissioner Tobin is on the line with us and will participate virtually with our meeting this evening. Commissioner, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear. Good to hear you, Jim. Good to hear you. Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping—
Can you hear me?
Just a couple of housekeeping items. We will strike item three, and I will ask the board if we can switch item 10 and 11. We'll make item 11, 10, and item 10, 11 this evening, and I ask the Board's pleasure to do so.
So moved.
The motion on the floor by Commissioner House has been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. Let's just have a couple of items this evening to talk to you about. Back in November of last year, Duck announced that Weeks Marine was delaying its scheduled beach nourishment work for the town until the spring of 2023. They cited some equipment issues and some other issues, and they weren't able to complete that project in Duck. If you recall, we had a maintenance project for Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, and Duck, and Weeks completed all of it with the exception of Duck. And on May 1st, today, this morning, the town released information about the resumption of dredging for its beach nourishment project. As they said, they were the only ones that didn't get their project completed, and maintenance project, in 2022. So I don't know the full details just yet, but there'll be a beach nourishment meeting on Wednesday afternoon at May the 3rd at 1:00, and Duck to provide—excuse me—to provide updates to the public regarding the project and answer any questions that the public may have. So that's good news that Weeks is back here to finally complete that major nourishment project, maintenance project for Duck. And then certainly, last but not least, wow. Tis Some Be Shelby. Anybody know? What an amazing story. A homegrown Roanoke Island native that debuted in the Metropolitan Opera this April. He's—as I said, he was a native from Manio, and he's gone from a bus driver to his solo debut at the Metropolitan Opera in the play Champion, a role which was made perfect for his powerful tenor voice. And he played the role of boxer Benny Parrott's manager Manuel Alfaro with an intensity that made the character come alive. The performance was shown Saturday, April 29th, on the beach over here at RC Theatres, and it tells the story of a welterweight, light middleweight, and middleweight champion, Emily Griffith. The story revolves around the nationally televised championship fight that took place on March 24th in 1962, where Griffith pummeled Parrott with—according to the opera—with 17 blows in 17 seconds. So just a great story on Mr. Shelby and his debut in the Metropolitan Opera. So I'm very, very proud of a native Manio individual that's performed in the Metropolitan Opera. That's all I have, County Manager, and I will turn it back over to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda. That's the county service pins. First on our list is Joseph Vesely, who's here to receive his 10-year pin from April Ferris.
Welcome this evening.
Good evening. So Joseph came to the United States from the Czech Republic, making his way to the Outer Banks in 2003. After he moved and prior to coming to work for Dare County, he worked as a Senior Sales Associate, IT Support, and Top Management Consultant for Kellogg Supply Company, a Tier Two Engineer for Service and Technologies, and an IT Information Specialist for the town of Kitty Hawk. During this time, Joseph also owned and operated an IT Consulting and Support Company specializing in areas such as web design and development, remote IT assistance, custom PC building, graphic design, network security, and structured query language development. With his impressive experience and interest in various technical fields, including computers, programming, hacking and cybersecurity, electronics, artificial intelligence, it should come as no surprise, he was hired in the IT department as a systems administrator in 2013, and later moved up to the position of systems analyst. We had no reservations when it came to offering Joseph the tax data analyst position, and we were beyond pleased when he accepted. His interest in municipal procedures and automation, paired with his extensive technical knowledge and skill, made him a perfect addition to our team. Since starting in our department in 2020, he has developed, automated, and maintained many innovative programs and processes that have streamlined the work we do. He has taken and continues to take courses to advance his understanding of property appraisal and analysis, and applies this information to meet the programming needs of our department. Joseph brings a positive energy to our office. He shows enthusiasm and pride in the work he does, and gives 100% every day. His selflessness and commitment to his colleagues does not go unnoticed. As you can see, those that were able to stay late today came to show Joseph's support in his achievements. Thank you for your 10 years of dedication and service to the county. Before you know it, we'll be standing up here presenting your 20-year pin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you all had the opportunity to interact and work with Joseph, but I have.
Oh, yeah.
This man is the real deal. Congratulations. Fantastic work.
Absolutely, Commissioner Ross. And he did it the right way.
Yes, sir.
He's come over to our country.
He's the best.
He's learned our traditions. He's passed all the tests, did it the right way. And I know the length of time he was in IT, anytime I had any issues, all I could do was go to Joseph and immediately he had it resolved, and he did a great job when he was in IT for us. And I know he's doing an excellent job in the Tax Department. So Joseph, congratulations.
Yep.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Chairman, Tim White will be receiving his 15-year pin.
Tim White?
Tim White?
My gosh.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
I thought it'd been 35.
Tim.
Just seems like it.
Chairman, it's a pleasure to present Tim White. You all know Tim and have known him for a while. You hear when we come up here, everybody goes through all the places that each person has worked in the county, and it didn't take me long to figure out Tim's because he's only been the Parks and Rec Director the full time he's been here. So we're tickled with that, tickled of having him for so long, and tickled for all the work that he's been doing for us. Many of you don't know, Tim was a college Division One basketball player when he got out of high school. I think he played at Arkansas. And I understand he can still shoot a free throw with the best of them, so don't challenge him.
Windmill?
He's been active in sports his whole life, his career before he came to Dare County was in the sporting goods industry, and he did that for a long time, and he became involved with all of our youth leagues. I know way back when my kids were growing up, everybody knew Mr. Tim. He was out and about, not only with sporting goods, but he coached teams, he coached his kids, he coached everybody else's kids. He's been involved in everything. He's been at the high school as an assistant coach, done lots of work in the community, being involved and being involved with our youth as they grow up. And so he was a natural fit when he came over to be our Parks and Rec Director. He runs a diverse set of programs in our Parks and Rec. We do everything from six-year-old soccer to—in some of our adult centers, you know, administering card games for the elderly that can't get out and be more active, and everything in between. You can't think of many activities that go on with our youth and with our older people in anything that the county does that he doesn't have a hand in, either in developing it, or administering it, or making sure the train doesn't come off the tracks with all these moving pieces all at one time. He's got a gift that is great for the job. He has the ability to get along well with people, and talk to people, and communicate. You know, you can go in, and he has to deal with all the problems. The problems could be six-year-old little Johnny didn't get to start on the basketball team. It can be as much as all the recent demands that we've had for activities for all age groups. You know, our demand now exceeds our capacity to provide them, and he has to juggle all those balls, make all those decisions, give us guidance, keep those people happy, and he does that with a smile and a good job. And when everybody sees him, they know they're going to get, you know, the straight shot, and he's going to do the best he can to make it all work out. You can't ask for more than that in someone who does what he does and for the role that he plays. He's dedicated to his job. You can find him on a field somewhere, or in a gym, or at one of our centers at any given time, making sure things are going, pitching in a hand. He's not beyond sweeping a floor. He's not beyond diving in and coaching a team when a coach is out sick. Whatever it takes to get the job done, Mr. Tim's there for those people and for those activities. With all that, he's dedicated to his family. He has his wife, his children, his grandchildren. He participates in their life. He's coached them all and brought them up to be fine people. He's done all those things. Again, I can't say enough with a smile on his face and with a humbleness we could all emulate. So, Tim, thank you for 15 years. Appreciate all your good work.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to tell him, thank you. Well, thank you for everything, especially helping our people out this past year with our salary study. I just want to give you a little brief update on the lights behind the two schools. The light poles are supposed to be in this Thursday, May 4th. They're supposed to be out there today. I didn't get a chance to go over there, surveying everything so that we put the poles in the right locations. Once that's done, then they'll begin to come in and do the foundations for the poles, which they have to—I'm not exactly sure how deep they go in the ground, but they have to pump all that water out, and they have to do an extra strong foundation for those pipes because of the water underneath them. And then we'll put our—they were hoping that—not next week, but the following week, they're going to start trenching, hanging the lights. So hopefully, by the end of this month, we'll have that field all lit. We still have a little bit of work to do on the aesthetics as far as, you know, painting the dugouts, putting the lines down for the fields and stuff like that. But like I said, by the end of the month, they should be able to go out there 24/7, and it's going to be a big asset to all the different youth groups in our community. So thanks for doing that, and thank you for my 15-year pin.
Thank you, Tim. Great work.
Chairman, Employee of the Month couldn't be here, so we'll do that one next month. And that brings us to item four on the agenda, the Governor's Award for Volunteer Service, and Shannon Gwager's here for that.
Shannon, welcome this evening.
Hi. How are you doing?
Thanks to hear these awards.
Each year, Dare County residents are able to nominate individuals or groups who have made a significant contribution to our community through their volunteer service. Once all of the nominations have been received and reviewed, they are sent to the State Commission for confirmation. This year, we have three award recipients. I will call each person up to the podium and read a little bit about—from their nomination. First, we have Kay White. So Kay White was nominated by Taylor McConnell. Kay has served as a volunteer for the North Carolina Aquarium on Roanoke Island for the past 22 years. During that time, she has served many roles as a volunteer, but her passion is educating visitors. Kay volunteers as an interpreter at various exhibits throughout the facility, including the always popular touch pools and the aquarium's Sea Turtle Assistance and Rehabilitation Center. Kay is always happy to talk to visitors, ensuring that they always learn something new every time they venture through the aquarium. According to her nominator, they are thankful to have such a dedicated volunteer who has contributed more than 20 years to enhancing the experiences of visitors at the facility. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Paula Donahue.
Paula, come on up. Paula was nominated by Katie Breslin. Paula has been a loyal supporter of all efforts, programs, and operations of the North Carolina Aquarium for over 22 years. In June of 2000, after retiring as the aquarium's volunteer coordinator, Paula began her volunteer service. During that time, she has spent more than 1,500 hours of service interpreting the facility's touch pools for guests, sparking appreciation of local aquatic environments to thousands of visitors each year. Paula also inspires her fellow volunteers through her quarterly newsletter detailing important events that keep the aquarium team informed and boosts morale. According to her nominator, the aquarium could not meet their mission without volunteers like Paula, who dedicate their lives and passions to the aquarium's efforts to enhance the experience of visitors. Our final recipient is Patricia Burexus. Patricia was nominated by Kathleen Bruhoney and Mary Ann Williams. Patricia is actually a medallion recipient for North Carolina. Each year, the state recognizes the top 25 volunteers in the state. Medallion award recipients are honored at an annual recognition ceremony, and this year it will be held on May 8th in Raleigh. I will read a little bit about Patty so you can see just why she was chosen as one of the top 25 of North Carolina. From an early age, Patty understood the precious gift of human-animal bond. Growing up with a grandfather who was a veterinarian and a father who was an upland bird conservationist, Patty absorbed their passion to help animals. Since co-founding the Coastal Humane Society in 1997, Patty has worked tirelessly for the All Volunteer Organization. She has served as the organization's president for over 20 years. Under her leadership, Coastal Humane Society has helped over 10,000 pets and their families. Patty has handled the CHS hotline for over 25 years, answering requests for assistance from pet owners in Dare County. Her volunteer commitment has been at least 15 to 20 hours weekly since 1997. With the backing of the Community Foundation, Coastal Humane Society launched a new program, Help a Dog's Heart, that has already tested 100 dogs for heartworms so they can be treated early without suffering health problems. Always keeping a pulse on community-wide issues and needs, in 2017, she led Operation Fresh Air for Pets, with CHS donating 64 state-of-the-art pet resuscitation kits to Dare County, Corolla, Carova, and Ocracoke Fire Departments. In 2019, she launched Operation Feed Our Pets, along with two other nonprofits, to keep Dare County food pantry supplied with pet food, ultimately distributing over 10,000 pounds of pet food and cat litter. According to her nominator, Coastal Humane Society is a visible, vibrant, and growing all-volunteer Dare County nonprofit organization, due in large part to Patty's vision, expertise, leadership, energy, and devotion. She is going to the medallion ceremony on the 8th, and so I will have pictures. I'll send those to Dorothy when she comes back, when she gets her medallion. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to public comment. Before we go to public comment, those of you that received awards tonight, if you'll go right out this door with Caitlin so she can get a picture, and wait just a second till everybody gets clear of the room. If you have public comment this evening and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When you do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that'll come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. I see a lot of familiar faces out there. There's two things on the agenda that I think a lot of you are here for. One is the cluster housing decision for the special use permit, and the other is the text amendment to remove the zoning from—the cluster zoning from the ordinances. Tonight, the removal for the zoning ordinances—the only action the Board's going to take is to set the public hearing to hear from the public about that issue at the next Board meeting. They will not be taking action on that tonight. So if you're here to speak about that, you're welcome to speak, but the public hearing that comes up at the June meeting is the more appropriate place to have that public comment, because that public hearing will be set specifically for that purpose. With respect to the special use permit application, the evidence was closed at the last hearing. Again, while you're free to speak tonight, no new evidence will be taken tonight, and the Board, when it comes to that agenda item, will simply be deliberating on the evidence that was presented to make a decision at that time. With that said, the first person I have signed up is Justin Bateman.
Welcome, Mr. Bateman.
Gentlemen, ladies, kind of feels like Groundhog Day. I was number one last time. I'm number one this time. I don't have my fancy laptop up here. Last time I read, I read a little something I'd written up, but today I'm going to kind of speak from the heart, a little freestyling, as I like to call it. I am going to start by saying, though, I've learned over the years that I always need to start with a disclaimer. So everything I'm about to say is from me. It doesn't represent the Wine Cheese Preservation Alliance. It doesn't represent the thoughts, views, and feelings of anyone else. 100% me. Sorry, I got a little something going on right here, but I got—if y'all have like a sticky note, I need y'all to write something down for me. It is the number 554. 554. 554. Write that down, and I'm going to come back to it. I wish there was a way we could move Mr. Alexander's chair up here, because I have a hard time turning and looking at him like this. I'm a little mind-blown by you, sir. We're still trying to figure out a way to stop this whole thing from happening, and I know that the Commissioners are going to do what they've got to do in a little bit, and we're going to come back to them, because last time I didn't talk to any of y'all. I just can't wrap my mind around someone who just doesn't care. You do not care. It is the fact, and it is the truth. I wish that you would—I don't know if you have or if you haven't, but if you've signed up for public up for public comment, that would be amazing, because I think that addressing Juanchees and the people in this room, and the people that have really stepped forward in trying to stop this action, I think you kind of owe it to them to talk to them a little bit. Maybe you already have to some degree, and I'm sure there's been some people that have emailed you off to the side, and maybe even called you on the phone, or come by your office. But there's some that haven't. And I mean, I know you probably won't, you got your attorney sitting there, and they'll probably say, "No, sir, don't get up there and do anything," which, I mean, I guess that's kind of respectable, but at the same time, it's not. It's not. I just can't figure it out. I can't figure out why somebody, after all this pushback, still continues to want to move forward with this project. It's starting with you, it can end with you. Okay? I really wish you would reconsider. I'm trying to be nice. My mom is sitting in the other room, and mama, I'm trying. But please, sir, seriously, is what, do you need the money that bad? Is the money that you are out to get, is it worth it? Is it really worth it? Again, I normally have a script, but I don't today. So this is all from the heart. Now, let's bring this back up to these gentlemen up here. I was going through and reading over the minutes from the meetings back in 2018 and And a lot of you were seated still. There was one that wasn't back in 2018, and then he was in 2019. I feel as if that gentleman was a victim of his surroundings. 554 is how many days between now and November 5th of 2024? Y'all know what that day is? Some of you need to, because all eyes are on you, and while Juanchees may not hold a whole lot of weight, all the unincorporated dare, unincorporated dare, they're watching this right now. They're watching all of this go down the way it is, and this has almost been like a magic trick. Back in 2018, or just not long ago, y'all were touting about the bridges, and the teacher pay, and all this other stuff that y'all have put money into. All this looking, got us looking over here, but over here, you were redoing these ordinances and putting it into paper about yay big, publishing. You did it legally, but it was that big, and that seems a little sneaky. A lot of people feel that way. You've got about 554 days to suck up to the people in here, and to suck up to all the unincorporated dare. I think, in my opinion, again, my opinion, there's one person that can probably take a few more terms, that can probably get voted in a few more terms, he's sitting right there. He's sitting right there. His name is Irvin Bateman, for the record. The rest of you, better tighten up.
Pixie Westco to be followed by Robin Mann.
Welcome, Ms. Westco.
Thank you. I have some figures here that I researched through the proper authorities. They're about power outages in Juanchees. So in 2016, we were out for 34 hours during Matthew. In 2019, we're out for 36 hours. Go back to Isabel in 2003, we were out for four days. In Hurricane Irene, in 2011, we were out for three days. Hurricane Dennis and Floyd, they came right in together behind each other. I don't even know what brief period we had power on between them. It was horrendously brief. The reason I bring this up is, the people of Juanchees work together, you've already seen that clearly. With the power out, we work together, everything comes about, whatever we have to do, we do. What worries me is my understanding from my research, this septic system that they're putting into this low-lying area on the west side of the island, needs power to function. It not only needs power to function, but because it'll be on city water, unless the city water is cut off, they'll have water coming in, filling up this septic that isn't functioning because there's no power. Could they put in something that would run it? Well, we found out during Isabel. You can run out of gas and not be able to run a generator. Now, they've gone to propane, that lasts a little longer, but four days is a long time to run a big septic system without power. Add to that, Dominion Power is set up on a grid that rolls. So when the power goes out for an extended period of time, they have to turn it on in cycles. It starts at the subdivision, which in our case is Midway. Then it comes down, then it starts on the east side of the island, the west side of the island, and we have people here who live there who can attest to this, they're the last ones turned on, and it can be as much as 12 hours beyond the rest of us. I just need to have somebody know these figures while they're considering this whole ordeal. Thank you.
Robin Mann will be followed by Amy Stone.
Welcome this evening, Robin.
Thank you. Good evening, county commissioners and citizens. Many of you know my name is Robin Mann, as we've said, and I've been a long-term resident and business owner in Mann's Harbor for many years. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the original 2007 zoning committee members, of which I served as a volunteer member of that group. Our hearts go out to Juanchees tonight. They are on our minds constantly. We vetted and adopted the original Mann's Harbor and Mashu's zoning ordinance with the help of the Dare County Planning Office staff. Most of those original members are here with me tonight also. During public comment at the April 3rd meeting, I reminded you of the great accomplishments the zoning committee completed in 2007, as we met weekly for over a year after Juanchees had completed their zoning. We communicated openly with all of our citizens within the community. We held several public open meetings at our community building so that we could listen and answer questions of our neighbors. Prior to its final approval and vetting, the proposed zoning materials were mailed to all property owners. The committee understands that 2007 was a while ago, and that our accomplishments may not have been remembered as a strong united civic engagement process. However, I assure you that after all of our diligent work to keep high-density housing out of our community, we are still committed to communicate, to advocate, to keep the MHA and the MHB zoning as originally adopted in 2007. It is troubling that this added Cluster Home Development clause will allow the type of housing we advocated against beginning as early as 2005, while our zoning process took shape. Unbeknownst to our citizens, this zoning clause, Section 22-31.1, Cluster Home Development, was added to our zoning, and now we are vulnerable and unprotected to those who do not share our same community values and want to change us. Research shows that Stumpy Point, East Lake, Mann's Harbor, and Juanchees are the most affordable areas to live in compared to all other areas in Dare County. However, we purposely chose to resist becoming like all other areas in Dare County. Even though mainland dare properties may look appealing for large, high-density housing, our infrastructure isn't in place. Mann's Harbor and Mashu's do not have central sewer or water system. High-density and heavily populated areas in this low-lying land will create major environmental issues to our drinking groundwater and our delicate estuaries. In addition, the increased traffic to our roads and the main intersection in Mann's Harbor as it stands is already overwhelmed and unsafe. It creates confusion with our local aging and young inexperienced drivers due to the increasing number of visitors and daily workforce traveling from the west. The added strain on our volunteer fire department, the lack of a water hydrant system and easily accessible water sources throughout our village, coupled with the need for a fully-staffed and trained fire department with proper equipment and adequate available first responders is needed now. With prevailing northeast and southeast winds, and to purposely create a situation allowing structures to be built too close together, it is highly probable, when one home catches on fire, it will be difficult to contain the flames to the loss of just one dwelling. We took all of these considerations into influences and influences into account when forecasting and planning our future. Commissioner, I present to you tonight petitions with several hundred signatures gathered from Mann's Harbor and Mashu's residents in the past few days against this added zoning clause that was amended to our existing community-based zoning ordinances. The former members of the 2007 committee and these signatures hereby request that you rescind this zoning clause as quickly as possible. In your board meeting package, the recommended action requested from the planning board will be to schedule to public hearing on June 9th. Please do not wait until June 5th, excuse me, the June 5th meeting. As for our treasured communities, time is of the essence. We request this issue to be added to the agenda of the May 17th Special Meeting of the County Commissioners, and plead with our commissioners to vote the recommendation of the planning board to rescind the Cluster Home Development. Thank you for your time.
Amy Stone will be followed by Rex Mann.
Hi, my name is Amy Stone, and I have a couple of things that I would like to talk about. The first one is the postal delivery issues with the Cluster Home Development. According to Donna Davis, who is the postmistress in Juanchees, they will not be delivering mail to the individual housing, houses. It will be required either by the builder or the HOA to install cluster mailbox for the cluster homes. And they must be purchased from specific vendors. One of them is mailbox.com, and the largest one I could find had 16 mail slots. So you're going to need a minimum of four of them. They must be mounted on concrete slabs, and there's very specific sizes and depth, and how they need to be secured, and they must be mounted directly inside the entrance. And that's a very kind of confined entrance, and I don't see anything on the proposed plans that show room for these mailboxes. There also has to be, according to Donna, a place for the post person to park their car and get out and service the boxes that will not obstruct traffic. The other issue that I wanted to bring up was, I would like to see this Board of Commissioners be the board that actually solves the affordable housing problem that's been going on in Dare County for 40 years. Every other board has kicked it down the road. Juanchees gave the county water, so you could sell more water meters to build more houses that people could rent by the week, and rental companies could make more money because you make more money renting them by the week. We do not have a housing shortage in Dare County. We, we don't have a house shortage, we have a housing shortage. And I would like to see the Board of Commissioners think outside the box and consider tax incentives to incentivize these homeowners and rental companies to put some of these houses into year-round rentals. We get occupancy tax, we get land transfer tax, and most of that is used to advertise for more people. We don't need more people, we need to take care of the people that are here servicing the industry. My suggestion, my suggestion to the board is to seriously consider tax incentives to these property owners, so they rent by the year, and that the rental companies are incentivized to have a year-round program as opposed to a weekly program, and that will go a long ways to solving our housing issue without having to... Juanchees was the goose that laid the golden egg because of water, and now you want to come to Juanchees and solve your housing problem, and we don't want it. We can't do it. We can't, we can't support that type of building in our community. So I plead with the commissioners to consider tax incentives with the money that we're already collecting, and perhaps even penalize those owners who rent by the week. Make them pay a little bit more to make a little bit more. And I thank you for your time.
Rex Mann will be followed by Allison Flynn.
Good afternoon, guys. Woke up Friday morning, and it was raining early in the morning, so I stopped and took a few pictures here of the Old Wharf Road, speaking on water. This is 306, traveling west right here. I'm sure you guys can see it, hopefully you can. There's your ditches there. As you can see, it's running over right into Nettie Tish's yard and across the driveway. Here's some more of it. This is leading right down to the road where the cluster housing is proposed to be being built. This is the new development that Johnson did. Lot of green space here, retention pond, green space. He's out there with a shovel trying to get it to drain, as you can see. Sure you guys have seen it, y'all were all there. But just speaking on the drainage, I don't know much about septic systems, but is there such thing as a sealed septic system, or doesn't it have to go somewhere? I mean, unless you're burning it, can you handle all that water on top of it? Even if you're recycling it, where does it go? So I'm going to read this to you, something I put together here. "Between two and a half and three inches of rain the other morning, many times the county has had to pay to have low-lying areas pumped. Even with retention ponds, the ground can only accept so much water, and when it can't accept anymore, it comes up in a different area and even floods other residents. In 2018, we had a lot of rain in a two-week period. The Coastal Review wrote an article titled 'Fix Costly for Roanoke Island's Flooding.' Ditches, swales, and culverts, once the dullest of public topics, have become an urgent interest on Roanoke Island, where this summer rainstorm spurred Dare County to consider construction of its first engineered storm-water management project. A new study of drainage infrastructure in the affected areas revealed that long-term fixes would not be easily, cheaply, or quickly addressed. Recommendations proposed in a three-phase project by Raleigh-based firm Moffett Knuckle would cost about $2.6 million, not including engineering and easement acquisitions. More than 15 inches of rain fell during this 10-day stretch in July 2018, flooding yards, homes, and roads with increasingly wretched water for weeks, even months. The water didn't have anywhere to go. It wasn't just about depth, it was also about duration. Responding to an outcry from residents, the county pumped 1.5 million gallons of water from affected areas at a cost of $50,000. The North Carolina Forest Service pumped an additional 1.5 million gallons. The county split the cost of the study, about $50,000 with NC DOT. This type of storm has at least a 10% chance of occurring in a single year. How will cluster housing and maximum lot coverage help with this type of problem?" I hope these folks can swim to their car. Now, that's all common sense, guys. Now, I'm going to talk about morality, and I'm going to give you a definition of it. Surely, you don't need it. "The set of standards that enable people to live cooperatively in groups. Acting in a moral manner means individuals must sacrifice their own short-term interests to benefit society." So here it is. Your hard-working group of people that need housing define the housing crisis that you speak of, Nella. "With all due respect, the $300,000 miniature homes, without owning property under them, unfortunately, are not an option in budget. We all know that. It would take two basic county employees to even remotely come close to affording that. Do I, am I wrong? Not you guys. So now, you will have used up 10 acres of good property that could have been used to solve this problem. Whether you admit it or not, you did speak of affordable housing and workforce housing, neither of which this unethical act of greed will help with. Just like she said, it saddens me that we're killing the goose, the Outer Banks, that laid the golden egg. The definition of that, and you all know it, a short-sighted destruction of a valuable resource motivated by greed." resource motivated by greed. If you can give me one reason, let me finish, let me finish, guys. If you can give me one reason other than greed, because it is not affordable, it is not workforce housing, I'll buy in. One reason. I'll be waiting to hear from you. Send me an email, call me. It's wrong. It's not helping the Outer Banks, it's not helping Dare County, it's not fixing your crisis, your housing crisis. It is not. Facts.
Allison Flynn will be followed by Craig Parker.
Hi, everybody. I'm Allison Flynn with the North Carolina Coastal Federation, coastal advocate and environmental economist. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your time. These comments supplement previous remarks that we submitted at the April 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting. Specifically tonight, the Federation requests that no approval be granted for special use permit applications falling under the Cluster Home Ordinance for unincorporated Dare County until an engineer is on staff or at a minimum contracted on behalf of the county. This position or service is urgently needed to provide the county with the capacity to evaluate and monitor the performance of stormwater systems that are proposed as part of rezoning and/or development applications. With the growing number of applications being submitted under the county's Cluster Home Ordinance, it is imperative that the necessary expertise review all proposed developments to ensure proper stormwater management practices are being implemented. Section 153.34 of Dare County's Code of Ordinances addresses stormwater management standards and explicitly references approval from the Dare County engineer in multiple instances throughout this section as a stipulation. And it's actually five, five times it references a county engineer. Employing or retaining a licensed engineer on behalf of the county would bring the county into compliance with its own adopted ordinances. For reference, I also have brought the ordinance where I've highlighted these instances for your, for your reference. In future years, the challenges of stormwater management will continue to increase as sea level rises and we have more extreme rain events. Groundwater levels in Dare County are influenced by rain events and sea level, and groundwater will rise as sea level increases since groundwater floats on top of saltwater. This means that preventing polluted, polluted stormwater runoff and flooding will become even more challenging in the years to come, particularly in areas of high-density developments such as cluster home developments. As already reflected in the county's adopted ordinances, it cannot only rely on the state to evaluate and monitor the adequacy of stormwater management to ensure that systems allowed, allowed in the county do not result in unacceptable flooding of the development projects being approved, as well as downstream flooding impacts on adjacent properties. North Carolina's State Coastal Stormwater Program only regulates water quality impacts from stormwater runoff, not water quantity or flooding issues. Stormwater management plans can be complex and involve a range of considerations such as site design, drainage systems, soil conditions, seasonal high water tables, and calculated water quantities. The hiring of an engineer would deliver the technical expertise necessary to properly evaluate proposed plans while also ensuring compliance with relevant ordinances as set by the county. Most importantly, a professional engineer would help the county prevent flood hazards with the potential to impact public health and safety. Thank you all again for your time tonight.
Craig Parker will be followed by Sandra Barrell.
Welcome, Mr. Parker.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, I'm calling you out.
Please do.
I am. During last month's quasi-dedicial hearing, part of last month's meeting, your questions to Mr. Alexander were all leading questions. One question that comes to mind is you said, and I quote, "Mr. Alexander, you never said this was affordable housing, did you?" Unquote. At which Mr. Alexander said, under oath, and I quote, "No." Unquote. Now, this application, right here, filed on October 21st of 22, 2022, under the product description, Mr. Alexander wrote in his handwriting, "Affordable Housing, 59-unit subdivision, comma, cluster home subdivision." Now, Mr. Chairman, Special Use Permit Number 3-2023, Item 17. This is from the planning boards. A violation of this permit shall be a violation of the code, and the special use may be revoked by the Board of Commissioners. Special use approval shall be revoked for any substantial departure from the approved application plans or specifications for refusal or failure to comply with line requirement, with the requirements of any development regulation or any state law delegated to Dare County for enforcement purposes, or for false statements or misrepresentations made in securing special use approval. Now, being Mr. Alexander, under oath that he never said it was affordable, and I myself have heard him say many times, he has not said this is affordable. Matter of fact, at the planning board meeting, he said it was going to be sold at market Either way, it's been misrepresentative, and for that reason, the permit should be revoked. Now, being Mr. Alexander, and furthermore, Commissioner Bateman recused himself for last month's hearing because it was said that because he had spoken to Mr. Alexander about alternative plan, this meant that Mr. Bateman had obviously made a decision before the hearing of the evidence. If this is correct, your leading questions to Mr. Alexander, sounds like you too had made a decision. Maybe you should, you too should be relieved. Mr. Woodard, at the end of last month's meeting, you said you wanted to respond to some remarks made by some of us. Of all the people, you were the only person who lost his temper during this meeting. Yes, sir, you did. You did. You went on to say, you, you, you went on to say that the comments made saying that this Board of Commissioners had done nothing for us. Obviously, you weren't listening to us because what I heard people say is while other areas of the county are getting sidewalks, ambulances, and other nice things in their community, Want Cheese gets nothing, nor does any of the other unincorporated parts of Dare County. And let me remind you something, too. You made a comment about the dredge that you bought us for $12 million so we could get our boats in and out of the inlet. Well, let me remind you that if it wasn't for fishing, both commercial fishing and sport fishing, Dare County wouldn't be on, the blot on the map that it is today. And you would not be sitting up there on your high horse looking down on us as we're peasants. So if you can't represent the people that elected you, you should step down. And, Rob, you were about to fall asleep and shot yourself in the head the other night and mouthed the F-word. Everybody sing it. Thank you.
Sandra Barrell will be followed by Ralph Barrell.
Hi, my name is Sandra Barrell.
Welcome, Ms. Barrell.
I would first like to thank you for all, for you all to be listening to our concerns in reference to the project on Old Wharf Road. I'm not here to criticize yous, I'm thanking you for listening. I realize some of you commissioners are not in favor of this project, and never realized that a builder would take advantage of the ordinance, as poorly written it is, and build 60 homes on 10 acres parcel in a residential area consisting of single-family homes, one house per lot. This is greed on the developer's behalf. I ask the board to please rescind this terribly and poorly written ordinance and take it out of Want Cheese. Please put our zoning back like it was before 2018. I realize there is a housing prob, problem in Dare County, as it is all over this country, but I do not believe that in this situation, 60 homes on 10 acres solves it. The concept, if you look it up, of cluster homes in my research was to preserve green space, not to warehouse people, in which, in my opinion, this project is. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you.
Ralph Barrell will be followed by Tom Stewart.
Welcome, Mr. Barrell.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. At the last meeting, you had your quasi-dedicial hearing, and it was a little bit different than ones that I'm used to being at. There were several things that I think that were missed during that hearing that I would just like to bring to your attention, that I know there's no evidence, I'm not going to give you evidence, but there's some things that I think you should think of, excuse me, as you, as you consider this project. As somebody who was in that, in the profession, is looking over plans for planned projects like this, some of the things I think were missed that had been brought up already was the septic systems, that, for backup power to them, systems. The other thing is stormwater, which I've been bringing this up, brought it up to the planning board also when I met with them, I believe, back in February about the stormwater plan, and that I don't think people don't realize, stormwater through the state is stormwater quality. It's not for flooding. That's what most of their ordinances are written for. The other thing is roads. And just so to give you some background, for stormwater, the position you just advertised for, I had all the credentials to fill that position. The other thing is about the roads that are in this subdivision. And yes, I was a certified DOT inspector. On these roads, all the driveways are gravel. And anybody will tell you that wherever gravel meets the edge of the road, you're going to have deterioration, especially on driveways. That's why if you look at a lot of the ordinances over in the incorporated towns, they have an ordinance to have an apron in front of driveways. An Egghead was the first one to do it. I had it put in probably 25 years ago. These are just gravel meeting the road, which deteriorates very fast, especially if you have a wet subsoil on this development, which I think you will because of the stormwater. And it is just setting the Future Homeowners Association up for a lot of fees to take care of these roads. So it's something I think you should look at, that there should be something to protect that edge of the road in front of these driveways. The other thing I would ask you to consider is your solid waste. When the first, this was proposed, all the dumpsters were put at the end of the cul-de-sacs. Having a conversation with your Politeworks Director, when she was out there at one, on another site, I told her some of the pitfalls that I ran into. I said, "You're not going to be able to turn your trucks around, and what's going to happen is your trucks are going to go in, pick up your dumpsters, and back out. And you're going to get the complaints from the residents that they hear, the backup alarms all over the project." Well, that got changed. Also, all the dumpsters were put in a central location, and now they're able to have a T-territ, which is fine, but now, people who live at the other end of the project will have to take their trash, probably about three football fields is what I can measure off the small plans I had, to dump their trash. Now, we all know how it is when we take trash out. You know, you get a cold rainy night, nobody's going to want to take trash 300 yards away to dump it. And especially if this is going to be for renters, I think what's going to happen is the renters are going to put the trash outside. And we still have a lot of wildlife in Want Cheese, that trash is going to be all over. So I think I would ask the developer to provide trash cans to every house, just to make sure that doesn't happen. The 60-gallon on wheels so they can wheel it to so they don't have to carry it through and fall all over. The last thing, since I'm running out of time, is the streets. Only the main road is signed for no parking. Well, to me, they're all, all these streets are basically fire, fire zones, fire lanes to get in and out, what I think cars are going to be parked on. So I think all the streets should be, should be marked with no parking signs. Or especially the last one, you have an emergency gate, but if there's cars parked all over there, how does that truck, if it gets, can get through the gate, can't get down the road? So at least that one should be also marked. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Tom Stewart will be followed by Andy Pettish.
Welcome, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, thank you for being here this evening, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Tom Stewart. I'm a licensed broker in North Carolina, I'm a property manager. I just want to point out, though, that I have zero pecuniary interest in Mr. Alexander's project, no financial stake whatsoever. I'm not, I'm not here to really talk about that. When I heard that Brad was putting together a cluster home project in Dare County, you know, I, I really felt strongly about it. I felt strongly about what the commissioners had put forward as a number-one goal in terms of affordable housing. We know that there are lots of definitions that we can throw out there, whether this is affordable, or workforce, or market rate, it really doesn't matter. In the last year in Dare County, there were 1,800 closings that reflect the type of home, single-family home, that, that this development encompasses. There were 18 closings that were at that price point. Excuse me, there were 1,800 total closings in Dare County, there were 18, 1% that reflect this price point that this development encompasses. So if nothing else, we can see that there's a severe lack of, of homes in that category. It doesn't take anybody to realize that that, that's a, that's a good category to be in, it makes sense for him to do business in that category. He could do bigger homes, smaller, bigger lots.
Sir, can I just clarify, you're saying that 99% of the home closings in Dare County were higher-priced than this?
Were other than.
Lower?
There might have been some lower, but.
No, I'm just clarifying, I'm not challenging.
No, 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 that's, that's fine, but at that price point, there were 18 homes that closed at that price point.
Okay.
So, and, and I, and I do know that there were very few, insignificant amount below that. But anyways, the, the real issue I look at here is, is yes, it fits a need in the market, whether, whatever price that that is. And I, I look at things like, you know, in terms of multiplier effect and the domino effect, it's not just the 59 units or 60 units that are being developed here. You know, it's an opportunity for people who are in rental homes now to potentially move into ownership situation, which means that rental homes can open up. If those homes open up, that means that people in lesser situations can move into those rental homes. I mean, that, that is the truth of the matter. Was it a true 100%, one-to-one, the whole way down the pike? No, but the impact's greater than just 60 homes. One thing I got. One thing I got, I really was excited about was I got the North Carolina Commissioners Association Book of Maps for 2022. And it's a great source of statistics. I know you all love it and read it all the time. In the last decade, the median age in Dare County has gone from 40 to 46. The number of young people under 18 has dropped by a full percentage point from about 18 and a half to 17 and a half. The number of 65 and older population has grown from 18%, give or take, in the last decade, to 23-point something, I don't remember the exact number. Close to 25% of the population is 65-plus or on its way there. And I've talked before about the dearth of folks who can take care of those folks. We're all getting older, I'm getting older, the nurses, the Dare County employees. I've given you statistics in the past about the number of openings. So, you know, as I look at where the county's heading demographically, we have a problem. And that problem's not going to get solved by not allowing cluster housing. In the future, should you tweak that, what the concept of cluster housing is, by all means? Should it be removed from half the districts in the county? I think that's a bad idea personally. I think that as we age and as the county continues in this path, it's going to see its problems increase, not decrease. We're making, we're not going to be doing what we know we need to do, and that's create a future for the county by having options for housing. I hope that it passes this evening. I hope that I'm not at the next meeting to talk about cluster housing and that part of the planning process. I hope it gets kicked back so that those folks can continue doing a little bit of homework on that. But that's all I really have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Andy Pettish will be followed by Joseph Willis.
Good evening, Chairman Woodard and commissioners. My name is Andy Pettish, Pettish Law in Raleigh, North Carolina. I practice almost exclusively in land use and zoning, and I represent the Wanchese Preservation Alliance. They, among other things, have asked me to review and advise them on the zoning regulations as it impacts the Wanchese community, specifically the cluster housing development. And I want to thank the planning staff, the planning board, and now the Board of Commissioners for acting so swiftly in having the staff look at that, take it to the board, the planning board, and then now tonight, hopefully, put that on for a public hearing so that that can be considered, the appropriateness of cluster housing development in various Dare County zoning districts. I think that that is definitely a welcomed exercise in the energy, the passion here tonight that this special use permit process has brought forward in the community. And I know that I'm in a room of people that are all passionate about Dare County, including the commissioners and all the staff that work here. But I've heard a tremendous amount of experience, of knowledge that's been shared, often not in the packaging that I'm sure that the commissioners would prefer it be delivered in, but it has struck me, the knowledge that has been shared, the concerns about the community, what's working, what isn't working. And I think that those can all be distilled from these last two meetings and taken to work towards looking at how the ordinance, even potentially beyond cluster housing development, might be amended and revised to better serve all the citizens of Wanchese and other portions of unincorporated Dare County. So I appreciate your time and the opportunity to introduce myself, and I look forward to working with staff in the county over the coming months to address these concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis will be followed by Carrie Williamson.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joseph Willis. I'm a fifth-generation resident of Wanchese on about 150 or 200 yards of Old School High Road. I'm very disappointed in the way that y'all handled the advertisement of the zoning changes. I realize that maybe you did do what was required by law. You put it in a little sticker postage stamp space in Coastland Times. And as you know, newspaper readership is extremely way down. Everywhere you read, you see it on the news, a lot of newspapers, or not even printing newspapers anymore, everything is going to online, digital media. So y'all did not do your due diligence. Every one of you had to come through Eggshead today to get here. What did you see on your way here? You saw numerous yellow signs stating "public hearing." They're going through some changes. So why didn't you do it? Yes, you did what you had to do, but you did not do your due diligence. You failed the people of Dare County miserably. You did not let us know. So it's funny how just a very few people spoke when you talked about changing the ordinances. I wonder how they find out? Something seems strange to me. So you were elected to do the will of the people, every one of you were. You haven't done it. The people have spoken, we have spoken. I think it's pretty doggone clear what the people of Dare County, especially Wanchese, think about the cluster home development. If you haven't heard it, you're either deaf or dumb. So to add on to some points that have other people have brought up, one person said that Wanchese gave Dare County water. Well, that's not exactly the case. Dare County stole Wanchese's water and then made us buy it back. Wanchese is tired of being treated like the redheaded stepchild. Okay? There's things you can do for Wanchese, not just Wanchese, other areas of Dare County. You can improve EMS services, create and implement a comprehensive stormwater drain-off program, or stormwater management, whatever you want to call it. It's been mentioned about flooding in Wanchese and rains. Yeah, there are some ditches, but where do the ditches go? Absolutely nowhere. They just collect water. So what good are they? You can connect them if you have to, and you pump the water out. You do all sorts of things everywhere else. You can do it in Wanchese. You can build bike paths in all of Dare County, not just selected areas. So there are things that can be done, and I think you should do it. I think you should uphold your oath that you took to serve the will of the people of Dare County. Thank you.
And Julie will be followed by Mitchell Bateman.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Julie Owens-Robinson, and I own property in Killdouble Hills that's been in my family for now six generations. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the uncontrolled development in Dare County and the Outer Banks, and also about the protection of the dunes. The beauty of the Outer Banks will forever be in my heart and soul. Walking up the narrow sandy path to the top of the dune, I anticipate with great excitement the view on the other side. I reach the top, and there it is, the ocean, reaching as far as the eye can see. My body immediately releases a deep sigh, and the stress and tension of life is washed away. This view on the top of the dune has always been my happy place, my little slice of heaven on earth, but that is all changing. We all know that change is inevitable, but not all change is good. The Outer Banks is known for its beautiful wide-open beaches bordered by large sand dunes which stand like sentinels against flooding and erosion. The dunes are stabilized by the growth of sea oats, which trap and collect the sand as they bend and flex in the wind. The natural beauty of this place and the spacious beaches have attracted visitors for well over 100 years, but uncontrolled development is putting that at risk. The town of Killdouble Hills is a prime example, where monstrous single-family houses and condos are taking over the landscape. These structures are cramped so tightly together, you can barely see the light between them. The towering walls block summer breezes and overpower the smaller, older homes, forcing the owners to sell. There are fewer and fewer cottages on the oceanfront for single families to rent and enjoy. The once spacious beaches have become so crowded, it is often difficult to find a spot to sit. The dunes are also being affected, and this concerns me greatly. The large-scale developers are getting permits to build and on top of the dunes, and you can see from the pictures, the photos that I've put in front, before and after pictures of what's happening near our property. It's as if these developers looked at the list of KAMA exceptions and decided to build as many of these structures as they could fit on the top of the dune in the maximum size and as close to the ocean as possible. These structures include swimming pools, beach access structures, elevated decks, enclosed storage sheds, and gazebos. Three years ago, we tried to move sand from our deck so it wouldn't be covered, and we were told we could only use shovels. And now, if you look, the bulldozers have been on the dune and moved tons of sand and also all of the vegetation, including the sea oats. Why are the rules different for the developers? This is not just an aesthetic problem, it's not just a personal problem for my family. This massive construction on the dune is an environmental disaster waiting to happen. A few days ago, I watched as a historic landmark cottage was moved from the oceanfront to make room for another giant house on the property next door. Thank goodness, the house was saved, but it leaves our little 1940s cottage standing between a motel of 108 rooms, two 22-bedroom houses, now I just learned today, a 16-bedroom house being built next door, an 18-bedroom house four lots down, and 150-room hotel across the street. That puts almost 700 people on the beach in less than one-tenth of a mile. This is a result of poor planning and complete disregard for the history and natural beauty which makes this place so special. I'm afraid it's too late for Killdouble Hills, but I think we should applaud those towns that are fighting against the cluster homes and the monstrous homes that are being built. But I especially feel like it's important for you all to know what's happening on the dunes, and we need to work together to protect them. As the Reverend said in the invocation, this is a fragile place. We need to make sure that the decisions that are made are protecting the beauty and the natural resources we have. Thank you for your time.
Mitchell Bateman will be followed by Allison Beecham.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Outen, distinguished members of leadership of our county. I'm probably going to get booed by my neighbors and all, but I want to offer a word of praise for what you're doing. I think you've listened, I think you've heard, I think you realize fully and completely, and we don't need to continue to beat that dead horse, that Wanchese particularly is not interested in cluster housing. We didn't come here, or I didn't come here, to speak for any of the other unincorporated areas of the county. I don't think it's our job or our responsibility to speak for Mans Harbor, Eastlake, North End of Manio, or anywhere else. You know, we came to speak about our community and the zoning that we put in place when zoning was first initiated in the county. I would like to offer praise to the Planning Board and the Planning Department for its work in the last 30 days since we met here last, and the draft of the text amendment that they've done for consideration for changing this back. Now, what they did was they did not pick communities, they picked zoning districts. If you've read the text amendment, and I know you guys have, the draft of the text amendment for change, it addresses all low-density areas, residential, low-density residential areas in the county. That was not our intent, but that was what the Planning Board came up with, and maybe that is right. I don't think we have the authority to speak for the other unincorporated areas. I think you fellows have been set up in some respect. The situation in front of you is primarily related to the municipalities in our county, the incorporated municipalities in our county. And they're asking you to come to the unincorporated areas to solve the issues in the incorporated areas. I think that when this board has addressed those problems with Kitty Hawk, Killdouble Hills, and Eggshead, they've done everything they can to stop you from putting in increased-density housing in their areas. I believe the parcel of property across from Jockey Ridge that Woa to Cooper was going to do, they did a moratorium and stopped everything until they could rewrite the zoning to disallow what was going to try to happen there. Y'all have been handcuffed, you know, but it's not our job, it's not the unincorporated areas' job to solve the problems of the incorporated areas where the housing shortage exists. The majority employer in our community, single independent employer in Wanchese is John Bayless. John Bayless stood in front of y'all, or before the Planning Board, I can't remember which one, and said, "I employ 125 people in my business. I don't want cluster housing. I don't want cluster housing in Wanchese. I want it to stay the way it is." So you had the number-one employer in the village, who would have the greatest need for workforce housing, stand in front of you and say, "Not here, not here." The other point, and I have brought this up a couple of times, not directed to the board particularly, but to other, to individuals of the board, you guys have 100 acres of buildable property 12 miles west of here. And you know where I'm talking about. There's actually 437 acres, of which 100 acres is buildable property. Couple of the other speakers have stolen my thunder about the septic system and the power. I don't know if it's too late to add a condition to Mr. Alexander's permit, maybe he needs generators in there? And I want to turn to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, I pray for you every day. I pray for you that you will change your mind about what you're doing. Now, whether you will or not, you know, we can't say these things, but you know what? God can. Thank you.
Allison Beecham will be followed by Jade Midget.
Hi, good evening. How are you? My name is Allison Beecham, and I live on Brinkley Drive, which is right beside where the development's going to go. The rain that we just had has made my yard completely underwater. It's totally flooded. The trees that are on this lot, well, let's give a rough estimate, probably within 10 acres, you can get about 1,650 trees. Each tree drinks about 10 to 150 gallons of water every single day, so we're talking upwards in the 250,000 gallons of water every day that that property drinks up out of our yards. Take those trees out, we're going to be underwater forever. There's no doubt about it. We're already underwater, the water's stagnant, it stinks, we can't get it out of our properties, there's no drainage. The water on this property is definitely going to come into our yards and take our yards from us. I also want to say I don't think it's right, it's unfair, and it's unjust to force the residents of Wanchese to inherit the neighborhood disruption due to the poor decisions of the board in 2018, who agreed to allow cluster homes in our zone to begin with. Mr. Alexander, you're the only person here that can stop it tonight. I doubt you'll do it. You've heard us, we're a really proud bunch, and we're up here begging you to stop it, and you're not doing it. and you're not doing it. You haven't taken anything that we have recommended into consideration. But then again, the devil doesn't make compromises.
Jade Midget will be followed by Betty Callum.
Hi, my name is Jade Midget, good night, or good morning, evening. This is a little note that Denise Daniels wrote that she couldn't be here tonight. Does anyone know how many trees will be cut down for this cluster home project? One of the reasons mature trees are so valuable is that they capture rainfall to help keep storms from becoming floods. Raindrops fall on every leaf or needle of a tree, some water flurries off, dripping from leaf to leaf to the end of the branch, or the end of the tree's canopy, or it drips to the soil. But some rainwater remains on the leaves, and when the sun comes out, the water evaporates without ever reaching the ground. The bark absorbs the water, too, as it flows down the trunk. Mature trees intercept 25% to 30% of rainwater that falls on them. The U.S. Forest Service estimates that an average, on average, 100 mature trees keep about 140,000 gallons of water from flowing into storm sewers. Storm sewers. What kind of storm water management will be in place when all the trees are cut down? All the rain that falls on building, street, driveway, sidewalks, parking spaces, and patios run off into the storm sewers, where it is sometimes too much to handle. The adjoining neighborhood already floods when there is heavy downpour of rain. The ditches on Brinkley Drive are very deep and fill quickly at times. What is going to happen to the neighborhood when all of the trees are gone and replaced by impervious surfaces that do not absorb water in any way? Who will protect the surrounding neighborhoods, the neighbors, when their yards are flooded? It will be too late to do anything about it once the trees are gone and 60 cluster houses are built. What then? Who will help us? The Commissioners, the planners, the builder? It's gonna happen. And I would just like to say on my own behalf that I live at the end of Cooper, which is at the back of the property, or the back of the project, and I wanna know what kind of noise is gonna be generated from these generators that are gonna have to be large enough to pump 60 cluster homes? If we are, if we're without a power, which we're gonna be, it's inevitable, how, I mean, how is it gonna be for their surrounding homes and the surrounding neighborhoods that have these ginormous generators that are gonna be, I mean, and then also, what are y'all gonna do when we do have a hurricane? We are due for one, we are due for a serious one. And I, for one, was in Stumpy Point when the last one, I don't know which one it was, don't quote me on it, but I was there with Operation Blessing, who, I don't even know where those people came, they came and brought buckets, and I was delivering buckets in extra tough boots to houses, to people there. I didn't see any of y'all, I mean, when we have a catastrophe in Wain cheese, we're often cut off. The, I don't know if y'all have been there, but the road from Manio to Wain cheese gets cut off, it gets, the sound flows across during a hurricane where it's not even passable by a vehicle. So what are we gonna do with all these extra people in Wain cheese with no, like was said earlier, we take care of our own. We can't take care of 60 more houses of people when we don't even have a grocery store. That'll be all, thank you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Patty Callum, Manio. You heard all the facts, now got an emotional plea. I stand before you again for the second time, hoping that this board will take into consideration the plea of most of the people in this room. I know that most of the concern is about the cluster home development proposed in Wain cheese, but I'm asking each of you to look a little deeper into the whole picture. This development is a true concern, and after the past rain this week, there are pictures of the flooding that occurred in the vicinity of that area being proposed. The citizens of Wain cheese and Manio have pleaded with this board to reconsider this development for many reasons that have been stated over and over to you. The 2006 zoning plan was put into place to protect Wain cheese from encroachment and was developed by the citizens of Wain cheese and passed by the Board of Commissioners at that time. It is what the citizens wanted. I implore this board to listen to the citizens of the whole of the Outer Banks. The goodliest land under the cope of heaven has become the land of the haves and the have-nots. I'm retired from the post office in Manio after 38 years of service to the people of this island, and I hope that during my retirement years I'd be able to enjoy the Outer Banks leisurely. I'm in the have-not camp, and I feel that the have-nots are losing their voice. I'm wondering how I'll be able to travel the island and the Outer Banks with the influx of the development and the traffic. I'm also here as a voice for my grandchildren. I hope there is some semblance of a Wain cheese left for them to enjoy as their grandfather and their parents have known. The zoning of 2006 was put into place to protect them from what is happening here today. I hope that this board will be the board of conscience. There has been an outcry of the citizens trying to maintain their way of life, stop the clearcutting, lower the density of the number of houses that are being built on the size of a lot, quit the building on the dune lines, and lastly, be mindful of the traffic that the row on Oak Island will be made to bear. We hope that you in turn will turn the tide and salvage what we can of the Outer Banks before, as Joni Mitchell said so well, "They pave paradise and put up a parking lot." Thank you.
That's all that I have signed up. Would anyone else like to speak at public comment? Yes, sir.
Thanks for our opportunity again, but really, you know, we've been-
Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Mike Daniels, I think they all know me. And we will see you soon. But, you know, we're, we're in a sad place, a sad time. You know what the Secretary of Interior wrote to every Dare County citizen, I think it was in 1940? You know what he told them? Do not sell your land to the outsiders, sell it to your local people. You see what's happened? We've got y'all, ain't many of you local up there, you moved here. And you know what? Have you got enough nerve, enough backbone to say, "Hey, we're gonna stop this thing"? Are you man enough to do it? Yeah, you are, if you got enough man to stand there and do it. Come on, guys, get up, just do it. Enough is enough. We didn't come here for nothing. And you know what, I wanna say one thing first, you know, this guy, he said a prayer a while ago, I wanted to pray that the Lord will touch y'all's hearts, that you can't sleep, or whatever it takes to get this thing done. Father, we thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your grace. God, you're the King of Kings, the Lord of all Lords, God. You're still in charge, God. We ask you to touch these men's hearts, Lord, that they will sleep until this thing is settled, for the glory of God, we pray, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Man, y'all in a crack.
Please state your name, please, for the record.
It's Britton Shakafer, Bobby. You know, the gentleman who gave you a lot of percentages about, who's a broker, who won't tell me where he lives, obviously not in Wain cheese. Anyway, it's, the problem, guys, and I've come to you, Bob, with a very common sense proposal that's been very vetted, it's worked in so many other places, so many other areas of creating busing, if we have to have people that want to come. I've talked to many people who live in Hyde County, Terrell County, Washington County, who fish with me, who tell me, when I ask them about living in Dare County, they said, "No, it's so much more affordable, we can afford so much more where we live, and it's easy for us, two or three of us, get in together and commute." A lot of the people who work in the boat-building industry, three, four, five, six guys, you know, are coming and going at the same time. But y'all know what the problem is, but a lot of people don't think about it. And the lady who just stood up in front of y'all, talking about a 22-bedroom, a 16-bedroom, a 18-bedroom, a 20-bedroom, guys, Cottage Rose was what the beach used to look like. They were the homes, four-bedroom homes, five-bedroom homes, you had sofas and couches, and everybody just kinda laid where they wanted to. Now, you've got, you've got many condominiums from one end of the other of the beach to the other, I mean, from one end to the other of the beach, and you look at these, they don't have old-timey shutters, they got little windows about that big, about 2 million of them, it looks like, and they've got air conditioning, and they've got pool tables, and they've got 10 refrigerators, and they've got, I mean, and it takes a lot of people to clean them. So in 2018, 2019, when I talked to one of y'all, y'all told me that the Home Builders' Association and the Outer Banks Association of Realtors were the two people who predominantly spoke in favor of this. We were not aware, no signs were posted, we had a postage stamp, which was legal, but the gentleman on the Planning Department talked about that. You know, there's shades of legal involved in this. But the same people who want to build 18, 20, 22-bedroom homes or put 60 trailers on poles in Wain cheese, they didn't think about that. Now, all of a sudden, they wanna pass that problem down to us. We don't have that problem. We don't have 22-bedroom homes that require three cleaners and you're trying to turn it over every week. I mean, y'all understand what the problem is. There are, if they've got to have labor, then let those municipalities who have allowed that type of building, let them figure it out. Let them put the parking lot in there where the people can be picked up, the cleaners that they have to have. You know, the same gentleman who talked about all the figures was talking about affordable housing last time, but we're not talking about affordable housing this time. There is no affordable housing, it's all relative. And that's what we're talking about, is just relativity. And I know that y'all, I know that some of you are absolutely just twisted up over this. Bob, I was upset that before the quasi-judicial hearing last time, you said that you would really like to have one of those homes. That, anyway, that really, really upset me because I feel like frankness and open speak, and you did lose your temper, but, and I appreciate that, I appreciate the passion, I can understand the passion. But also, I want you to look at us. We didn't, we didn't cause the problem, and we want to be just what we have said in our own zoning ordinance, that's what we want Wain cheese to be. So if I were you, and I'm not, thank God, but I would put it back on the people who've created the problem to figure out the solution to the problem. And I thank you guys for the opportunity to speak, and I thank you for many, many of the things that you do for this county.
Hold on, Ms. Kill. But she come next.
I wanna speak to-
Sure.
Good evening, I'm Millie Gallup Barclay, and I'm not a public speaker. I know a lot of you guys on the Board, and you know I'm not a public speaker, but I am a Wain cheese-er. I was born, raised in Wain cheese, I've worked with Dare County, I've worked with several places in this area, I've kept some of your grandchildren, in fact, babysat for them. I have my church at Wain cheese, my family's in Wain cheese. I was blessed that my dad bought a piece of land years ago and was able to give each one of his children a place to reside. Very blessed, I'm very thankful. I have a 96, well, she'll be 96 in July, my mom, that I helped with. And believe me, I'm concerned when we talk about ambulances, fire departments, flooding, coming and going, hospitals. I've been through all that stuff. I know what it's all about, y'all. You don't wanna be there. I know when you have 60 houses and you've got 120 cars without any visitors or anybody, you know, running in and out for anything, that's a lot of traffic. I live on a road that probably will be affected by that traffic. I've been hit head-on before, I know what it's like to be in traffic, and I'm just asking, please, think about us, not about money, not about bringing big things to the county, think about us, the people that have been here for generation after generation, and we love it here, we love Wain cheese, it's our home, it's not a money-making thing for us. We've given a lot of money-making projects to the area, I mean, the boat building, the fishing, you know, but we love it, it's our home. Please don't take it away from us just because of a few bucks. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Tillan, and I've been here before many times, but right now, I would just like to give you the definition of a village, and I think it's important because all of Dare County at one time was a village. Kitty Hawk was a village when the Wright brothers came here. Right now, it's Kill Devil Hills because they became a town. We are a village, and I would like to read you the definition of a village. A village is a small settlement founded in a rural setting, and it's generally larger than a hamlet, but it's smaller than a town. Some geographers specifically define a village as a home with 500 to 2,500 people. Now, isn't that amazing? Maybe at one time, there were 2,500 here, 500 there. I remember when I was small, that Buxton was called a village, Hatrice was called a village. Wain cheese has always been called a village. But you know what, now, with all the building over on the beach, I never hear anybody refer to Buxton Village anymore, it's just Buxton on Hatrice Island, and it's Hatrice on Hatrice Island. Thank heavens, Ocracoke is still a village way over there. But what I would just like to say is that our village has at least 2,100 people that serve by the ambulance, by the fire department. So we still fall into the category of a village, and we wanna remain a village. We do not want all these people at one time coming in here that have no investment in our, in our community, in our county. They're not paying any taxes, they're just, they're just using our land just to come for a little while and then move on to someplace else. We want people to move in, but we want them to be permanent, and we welcome them, with 15,000 square-foot lots on single-family homes with an accessory dwelling unit. And, and we created that accessory dwelling unit many years ago, and it wasn't even heard of, and look how it's been grown and used, and, and it's just amazing to me. And on a note before I end, I would like to say thank you very much to our firefighters and our police department, because I had an incident a couple of weeks ago in Wain cheese. We've gotten a lot of governors' praise for volunteers, but I would like to publicly let you all know and thank the volunteers that came to my home when a car, at about 1:00 in the morning, went into my yard and took one room off the side of my house. Thank the Lord, nobody was hurt, except for the boy was hurt a little bit, but he walked out of there alive. And the volunteers came, there were three fire departments, Wain cheese, Manio, Nag's Head, there were about four sheriffs, there might have been six, but I can't remember, there were so many people, but there were 25 volunteer firemen. And you know, it's just wonderful when you're in a village, and when you're in a community, and you're permanent, that people come to help you, and they put their arms around you, and they know you. And we know one another in this community. We know the people in Mans Harbor that are permanent, that have been there, we know the people at the North End to Manio, we know the people in Buxton, and we want to be a village, and we want to keep knowing one another. We do not want people moving in and out and using our land, and thank you so much.
My name is Kendall Austin, and I'd like to thank y'all for letting me speak. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. The first one is, if they're gonna- The first one is, if they're going to be three-bedroom and two-bedroom, how many people are going to be allowed to stay in these homes? The second question is, we were, I'm under the understanding, they're 15 feet apart. I'm five feet tall. That's only three of me in between these houses. Okay, y'all all have kids and grandkids, I'm sure. You want to put them in these houses that have no firewalls and no sprinkler systems? Do you think they're safe? What are you going to do when one catches on fire? I mean, we've had nothing but wind for the last few days. You cut down all those trees, all there's going to be is wind. One of those catches on fire. Are you gonna, are you, do you feel like these houses are safe enough to put your kids or your grandkids in? And I have another thing, Mr. Chairman. I was here at the last meeting, and I think that you owe all of us that were here an apology, not lip service, but a full-fledged apology for how you spoke to us and talked to us. We are a village, we are a community, we are a family that are passionate about where we live and what is happening to us because of greed. And I just want to, and I just think that you need to sincerely apologize because your attitude towards us was very condescending. And you know what? It really hurt. Thank you very much.
Okay, my name is Nan Willis, and I live in Wyandee Cheese in Old Schoolhouse Road. There's been a lot of good points brought up here tonight, but I think the thing that stands out the most to me is what Craig Parker said. Because let me tell you what, he did some homework. Now, I want to know, what is going on between the Board of Commissioners and this clown sitting over here? I have been told by a county commissioner that if they vote, if y'all voted against this tonight, that you could get sued. My question is, who's going to sue you? The clown? Not me. Okay, why is it that on his application, it does say about affordable homes? This is not affordable. And why did you, Bobby, lead him on with the question? You don't have the right to do that. You don't have the authority to do that. If you had been in a court of law, your butt would have been kicked right out that door. And now, I'm going to tell you something else, too. This is really bothering me tonight. Why is it that Mr. Tobin's on the line? Not that I have a problem with him being on the line, but why is it, when it comes down to the night, that you gotta vote, you get Mr. Tobin on the line? Okay?
Mr. Tobin can participate in this meeting.
I realize that, but he's never participated before.
But he's not allowed to vote.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for clearing that up for me. Okay, Irvin Bateman? Now on to you. I heard through a lot of little birdies flying around, not just in Wyandee Cheese either, but over on the beach where your restaurant is, that you did, you got yourself accused on purpose. And I also heard you made the statement after all this mess that was going on in Wyandee Cheese, you didn't think you were going to run again. Well, you know what? If you don't want to, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. I'm not going to lose any sleep over any of you not running again. And the elections are coming up in two years. And by God, I'm going to tell you something. I will not vote for one of you, not a one. I'm only one vote, but it can be multiplied. We take care of ourselves in this village because you will not. Now, if you vote tonight and you pass this after Brad Alexander is lied, and after you let him on to lie, then you've got a big, big problem. And you can be sued also. And what he filled out on that application, I suppose, is now a lie? Affordable homes? And he also said it was going to be stick-built. Okay, what kind of stick-built? Is it going to be built somewhere else and trucked in? Are you going to bring all those 2x4s and 2x6s here to Dare County and build it on that lot? You need to clarify that, too. Now, I'm sorry, my anger has showed up, but I'm sick and tired of you people walking all over the other people in this county because of greed. And Brad Alexander, you can go back to the question. We don't need your crap here. All right, I'm trying to catch my breath because I'm so mad right now. But let me tell you something. If you do this, if you pass this tonight, you may have won the battle, but by God's grace, we're going to win the war.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to tell you, we appreciate y'all. And we appreciate you taking the time. Laurie Tillip from Wyandee Cheese, my family from the 1700s. Been there, fishing family, been there my whole life, my family goes all the way back. But I'm going to take a little different stance from Nan. We all are passionate about what we feel. But I feel, I don't know for a fact, but I would guess in 2018, when our ordinances got changed, none of y'all were probably involved in that, maybe one or two of you were. But when it wasn't properly advertised, that was our beef, we didn't have the opportunity then. But y'all have the opportunity tonight to be the heroes to change this for Wyandee Cheese and all of unincorporated Dare County. This is a bad ordinance for everybody. There's a better way to do it. Six homes on one acre is too many. You know, we were 3/4 of an acre for one home in Wyandee Cheese. Then it went to a half acre for one home, and that's good. I like that, that's fine. I mean, if we cut Brad down to half, and it's 30 homes rather than 60, that's still three homes per acre. That's a lot more than what's currently allowed, and he can still make money. Hopefully, that person can still sell their land. I mean, can there be some sort of, something that balances out? But 60 homes on 10 acres is just too much. And y'all can be the heroes tonight that can change that, not just for Wyandee Cheese, but for all of unincorporated Dare County. Thank you for your time.
Sign on any public comment from Buxton.
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close public comment, and we'd move to item six, which is a proclamation from the Coastal NC Local Foods Week 2023, and Dee for Law is here for
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Ms. Farrell.
We'll all take a little breather. How about that? And move on to Coastal North Carolina Local Foods Week. Whereas Coastal North Carolina Local Foods Week is being celebrated throughout the region June 11 through 17, 2023, in order to bring greater awareness of the nutritional, economic, and social benefits of local foods in North Carolina. And whereas healthy eating is vital to building a healthy regional food system in Dare County and addressing obesity and related chronic illnesses, can be strengthened through greater consumption of fruits, vegetables, whole grains, and other locally-produced foods. And whereas Dare County is home to community gardens, farmers' markets, fish houses, many food-related businesses, and numerous community organizations which address issues related to food production, nutrition, and food business development for Dare County residents. And whereas agriculture and commercial fishing generates more than $24 million in cash receipts each year in Dare County, providing a large share of the economic output in the county. And whereas Dare County is supportive of numerous community initiatives to develop, expand, and strengthen a local food system which is accessible, resilient, environmentally compatible, and inclusive of all citizens. And whereas consumers, farmers, and fishermen benefit from the expansion of a local food system, which includes direct sales of food products from farmers and fishermen to consumers, development of value-added food products by local businesses in Dare County, and institutional purchases of locally-produced and culled food directly from farmers and fishermen. And now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 11 through 17, 2023, as Local Foods Week in Dare County, and urges citizens of their communities to support local agriculture and purchase more high-quality, locally-produced foods, and learn about the benefits of agriculture and local foods in Dare County this first day of May 2023.
Move to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the proclamation Coastal North Carolina Local Foods Week 2013, excuse me, 2023, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dee.
Next, we have a proclamation for EMS Week for May 21 through 27.
Good evening, County Manager, Chairman Woodard, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to read you the proclamation for EMS Week 2023, which the theme of is "Where Emergency Care Begins." The proclamation reads, 2023 EMS Week Proclamation, to designate the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services is the community's medical care safety net, fills the gaps, and provides important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, access to telemedicine, and performs lifesaving and time-critical interventions. And whereas emergency medical services personnel serve our community on the front lines, often with personal sacrifices of being away from their families on nights, weekends, and holidays, in all types of weather environments, and face numerous personal risks and threats to ensure our community receives the best care possible. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by design, designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas this year's national theme for Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS, Where Emergency Care Begins, now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners in recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week this, the first day of May 2023.
Move to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt a proclamation, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. County Manager, just to confirm, Commissioner Tobin cannot vote. Can he make a second on a motion?
He can, on this issue, he can participate.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
County Manager, I'd like to just say something really quick if I could. As we always do during the week of EMS Week, we welcome the community. Come by our stations, you can do it anytime, but EMS Week's a great time to come by, meet our folks, see our equipment, talk to our folks, visit with them, bring your children by. It's really helpful to us if, when the kids come by in a non-critical situation, we can make them feel better, so that when we have to come to the home, it's not as threatening. So that's a great thing for us, it helps us do our job. And I would also like to just take a moment to thank you, County Manager, Chairman Woodard, and the Board of Commissioners, as well as your staff. You guys have given us unwavering support in EMS, which has allowed us to really carry our mission forward of providing the care to the residents and visitors of Dare County, and we just couldn't do it without your support. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a proclamation for Vulnerable Adult and Elder Abuse Awareness Months for 2023. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas North Carolina joins the world in recognizing World Elder Abuse Awareness Day every June 15. And whereas protecting North Carolina's vulnerable and older adults is a community responsibility, and all citizens are charged under state law to report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation to their local county department of social services. And whereas North Carolina's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care settings, and communities. Whereas in fiscal year 2022, there were 18,281 reports of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of vulnerable and older adults made to North Carolina's 100 county departments of social services. Whereas in fiscal year 2022, there were 57 reports of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of vulnerable and older adults made to the Dare County Department of Social Services. And whereas national and international research shows that abuse, neglect, and exploitation of vulnerable older adults is grossly underreported. And whereas the state of North Carolina enacted the nation's first elder abuse law and recognizes the need for a comprehensive system of protection for vulnerable and older adults. And whereas Mother's and Father's Days are national holidays intended to honor, respect, and promote the dignity and well-being of our older citizens, now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Mother's Day through Father's Day, May 14 through June 18, as Vulnerable Adult and Elder Abuse Awareness Months in Dare County, and commend its observance to all citizens this first day of May 2023.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve the proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
I just had one question, Bobby, it's me. Did we obtain any data on the 57?
I don't have the last.
Okay, I'll follow up at that time, that's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda is for the College of the Albemarle to add a welding lab and gas storage building. As you can see from your packet, after the completion of the COA academic building, the college inquired about using some of the project funds that were left over for a new welding lab and gas storage building. Barnhill was the construction manager for that project and provided a quote. The quote is in the amount of $380,563. There are sufficient funds left in the fund to cover that cost. A significant part of that is part of the rewiring, rerouting of the routes to accommodate these welding labs, and so it is a relatively significant investment for a storage area, but there's more to it than just storing the gas. So with any other question, is Dustin here? Yeah, there he is, okay. Dustin's here, he's the project manager. If you have other questions, then he can answer those questions.
Does the board have any questions, Dustin?
Dustin, can you go into some detail on the other stuff, other than just the building?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I say, could you go into some detail about this, other than just the building?
Yes, sir. So in addition to the 220-square-foot building that's being proposed, there's also approximately 1,700 square foot of remodel work to the existing welding lab. A lot of that, as County Manager mentioned, there's some internal working, some wiring, a lot of conduit and piping that need to be done to get the, the gas from the new building into the existing welding lab.
So they will have, this, this building will contain all of the, the gas, the fuel, whatever.
Yes, sir.
And it will be piped to the welding lab.
That's correct.
So they'll just connect to it there. So you won't have, you won't have tanks in the?
That's right, that's the, that's the big reasoning for this, is to get the individual cylinders out of the existing welding lab to create more usable space and a little bit safer of a workspace for the students.
10-4, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? Pleasure, the board.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve the author, unauthorized the county manager to sign the change order request, has been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries unanimous. County Manager, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
I'm calling the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over. And I'll turn it back over to the County Manager.
Chairman, we've changed the items, the order, so we'll go to item 11, then we'll come back to number 10. Item 11 is a zoning text amendment for the removal of the zoning districts from Chapter 3, 31.1 Cluster Home Development Ordinance. At your March meeting, you all asked the planning staff and the planning board to come back to you with recommendations with regard to that issue. In your packet, you have their recommendations and their information. The next step in the process would be for you all to have a public hearing, hear what the public has to say about that, and after that public hearing, then you all would take the information that you have, the information that you received from public comment, deliberate, and make decisions on what to do with that ordinance. So the business before you tonight is simply to set that public hearing, and that's what your motion would need to be. If you have any questions about that or about the process, Noah's here, he can answer those questions, and we're glad to go forward. But again, what you're here for is simply to set the public hearing.
Thank you, County Manager. I believe there's a timeline. We have a special meeting on the 17th, but maybe help me out, Noah, if you can meet that deadline. I know we have certain requirements as to the number of postings and the time.
It's got to be posted a number of times consecutively for, I believe, two, see the two weeks consecutively. I don't know if we could get the required number of postings in that amount of time for the change to the 17th.
Okay, so then we need a, we need a motion to schedule a public, public hearing for June, June 5.
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion's on the floor to do so for June 5, 2023, by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner Bateman, and it's been seconded by Commissioner House.
And let's make that a caveat as well, that if, if there is time to get it moved to the 17th, that we can, with proper notifications, that we can do that.
Absolutely, okay, that's amended motion. To those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Chairman, that then brings you to item 10 on the agenda. This is the Villages at Old Wharf Road Cluster Housing Development Special Use Permit Application, number 3-2023.
I need to recuse myself, as I announced last time, because I had a predetermined opinion of the project, so I'm going to walk out and continue. The predetermined opinion was because I called the developer. It was trying to help, wasn't because I was scared, Nan, it was because I was trying to help. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. He was previously approved to recuse himself, so he's following continuation of last meeting.
Where we are now, as you all had your quasi-judicial hearing at the last meeting, you.
Get that door, please.
You heard all the evidence presented, you closed the public hearing, so no new evidence can be put on by either party tonight. And so tonight, you're charged with the responsibility to take that evidence that you heard at that public hearing, and only the evidence that you heard at that public hearing, and make decisions on whether the applicant has made and proved to you that he has met the conditions of the ordinance. If he has not, then you would deny the special use permit. If he has met those conditions and proved that he met those conditions, then you're required to allow the special use permit. You're also required to make findings of fact, no matter what decision you make, and those findings of fact become the record in this case if it were to be appealed, or anyone would take it up. So what I've done to try to help you with that is I had Cheryl go through and, and go through the record and sort of out, and we put together the facts that were presented. We also put together a list of the conditions that you all talked about that we have the authority to require, as well as the conditions that the applicant consented to in his presentation. And so with your permission to give you context from which to deliberate, I'm going to run through those facts.
Thank you, thank you.
Real quickly. First was that the written application of the petitioner with all the attachments was presented to the planning department as required by section 22-65 of the Dare County Code on October the 21st of 2002. The request was for a cluster home development pursuant to the county ordinances section 22-31. The parcel to be developed and the subject of the petitioner's application is a 10.53-acre parcel located on Old Wharf Road in the Wanches Tax District, identified in the tax records as parcel number 025921000, PIN number 979706482784, and zone Village Residential VR under the Dare County zoning ordinances. The current owner of the property is James V. Daughtry, who is authorized petitioner to apply for the special use permit requested. Cluster home developments are subject to review and a special use permit under the terms of 22-31.1 of the Dare County Code. A petitioner presented a proposed site plan for the 10.53-acre parcel. The proposed site plan consists of 60 individual dwelling units. 24 units will be three-bedroom homes with 1,120 square feet of conditioned space, and 36 units will be two bedrooms with 960 square feet of conditioned space, all within the 1,200-square-foot maximum requirement. The proposed site plan shows that the proposed units will be separated by the 15-foot minimum requirement. The property had a wetland delineation completed by George Wood of Environmental Professionals confirming three pockets of wetlands totaling 4,032 square feet. The applicant will apply to the Army Corps of Engineers for any required wetland fill permits. The proposed site plan shows lot coverage shall not exceed 30% of the total area. The proposed site plan shows that the dwellings constructed as a part of the cluster home development meet the setback requirements set forth in the VR zoning district. The number of parking spaces required for the development is 144 spaces. The proposed site plan shows 204 parking places, with 50% of the required parking being an impervious surface of concrete or asphalt. The proposed site plan shows that the units shall be constructed on piling foundations with paved parking underneath, and the remaining parking spaces will be constructed of gravel in front of the individual units. The applicant shall manage storm runoff internal to the property through a series of basins as well, as shown on the site plans and grading and drainage plans. Waste water will be handled by six onsite septic systems with 10 units hooked to each system. The waste water system meets all requirements set forth by the North Carolina State statutes and administrative regulations. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed the site plan, and the applicant has accepted his recommendations and incorporated all the recommendations as reflected on the site plans. The designated water line shall be capable of providing needed fire flow requirements of 1,000 gallons per minute. The site plan for the development shows it is accessible to both emergency and service vehicles from existing abutting roads and streets with a 30-foot right-of-way and 20-feet paved improvements. A traffic impact analysis was prepared by VHB Engineering NCPC. The study has been presented to the Dare County, I'm sorry, to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The traffic analysis was found that the effect of the, of the traffic on the existing area will be minimal, and the ingress and egress set forth in the site plan addresses all traffic needs of the development. The applicant has agreed to covenants which provide that any occupancy of the dwellings and said development shall comply with the Dare County zoning ordinances of long-term structures and shall not allow rentals for periods of less than 365 days. The applicant requests a use permitted by special use permit under the Dare County zoning ordinance, subject to the quasi-judicial procedures set forth in section 22-7, which include cluster home developments, and petitioner's plan of development complies with the requirements of the Dare County Code of ordinances. The Dare County Board of Commissioners is empowered under the sections of the code set out above to approve special uses and apply reasonable and appropriate conditions. The notice procedures of section 22-72 of the code have been complied with prior to the hearing of this matter. The conditions that we're authorized to impose and the conditions that they have consented to impose are as follows. The use permitted of cluster home development consisting of 60 residential structures and associated infrastructure, built in accordance with the site plan as submitted as a part of the petitioner's application and attached as Appendix A, is included as a part of the permit and in accordance with the conditions contained herein. The cluster home development shall operate at a minimum as prescribed in the definition set forth in 22-31.1 of the Dare County zoning ordinances. The homes shall not be occupied or rented for any period of less than 365 days, and such restrictions shall be included in restrictive covenants upon the property, which shall be recorded in Dare County Registry prior to any rental, sale, or other transfer of a property interest. The provisions in the covenants shall not be amended, changed, modified, or withdrawn without the written consent of Dare County. All structural improvements shall be located in the dwelling footprints as shown on Exhibit A. The conditioned space of each structure shall not exceed 1,200 square feet in area. The structure shall be located on the parcel in conformance with the setbacks of section 22-27.7 and section 22-31.1 of the zoning ordinances and the Dare County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. A final site plan of the cluster home developments in accordance with Appendix A, and that Appendix A is also the Exhibit A that I referenced in paragraph four, shall be recorded in the Dare County Registry prior to any rental, sale, or other transfer of a property interest. The cluster homes may be transferred to individual owners with the remaining portions of the site dedicated as common area owned by a homeowners association or other similar entity. The homeowner's documents shall include restrictive covenants recorded with the Dare County Registry prior to the transfer of a property interest, which contain provisions requiring the collection of sufficient fees from the property owners for the maintenance of wastewater systems, stormwater infrastructure, roads, buffers, and all other common areas. A copy of the homeowner's documents shall be provided to and approved by the Dare County Planning Department for compliance with this requirement and, in this special use permit prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Building permits for the structures shall be secured within 36 months from the date of the Board of Commissioners approval. An as-built survey for the property shall be submitted to the planning department upon the completion of all the structures to confirm compliance with the terms of the Dare County zoning ordinance. If the developer chooses to construct the structures at different times, then individual as-built surveys for each structure shall be required before any structure is certified for occupancy. Roads internal to development shall be paved and constructed as depicted on the approved site plan. The road shall be constructed to support 75,000 pounds, as indicated by the Dare County Fire Marshal. Upon completion, road improvement shall be certified by a licensed engineer to meet the weight specifications stipulated by the Fire Marshal. Road maintenance shall be the responsibility of the petitioner or the homeowners association that is established with the cluster home development. The road improvements shall be perpetually maintained to comply with the approved construction specifications. All roads shall be maintained with a clear height of 13 feet 6 inches. There shall be no parking allowed on the roads within the development. No parking signs and surface markings shall be installed. This shall include the dumpster site location. The emergency vehicle gate on Brinkley Drive shall have a clear opening of not less than 20 feet with a lock key to Roanoke Island Fire Department Knox Box Key. There should be a no-parking fire lane sign located on each side of the gate per the Dare County Fire Marshal requirements. Fire hydrants shall be installed, as noted on the site plan and in the Dare County Fire Marshal comments dated November 8, 2022. The needed water flow shall be provided at a rate of 1,000 gallons per minute. All water lines for the fire hydrants and basic road improvements must be installed and approved by the Dare County Fire Marshal prior to the issuance of the building permits. Roads shall remain clear during construction for emergency vehicle purposes. Driveway permits or approval from NC DOT shall be provided to the planning board before land-disturbing activities can occur. All structures shall be built to the North Carolina Building Code Wind Zone 3 requirements. There shall be no staging equipment or materials in or along the right-of-way of Old Wharf Road, Brinkley Drive, or Hooper Lane. A vegetative buffer shall be established in the applicable setbacks from the property lines from the development. The vegetative buffer shall consist of a portion of the existing hardwoods present and be reinforced with indigenous deciduous and/or evergreen trees and indigenous dense shrubs. Vegetations shall be planted and maintained in a healthy growing condition and be perpetually maintained by the property owner or the homeowners association. Privacy fencing 6-foot in height and vegetative buffering shall be installed along the east property boundary, as depicted on the site plan. Language shall be added to the homeowner's documents that reflect this condition. All recommendations of the NC DOT for traffic control shall be followed, including, if required, a right-turn lane into the entrance to the property or such other safety measures as required by NC DOT. The names of all streets within the property must be approved by the Dare County to avoid duplicate street names or other confusion for first responders. The restrictive requirements required herein shall give Dare County the authority to enforce the covenants with respect to the terms of this special use permit. All supplemental and required state and federal permits, including but not limited to wetland fill permits, stormwater permits, wastewater permits, CAMA permits, shall be secured prior to ground-disturbing activities. Copies of these permits shall be provided to the Dare County Planning Department. No changes or deviations from the terms or conditions of the special use approval shall be made without written approval of the proposed changes or deviation has been obtained from the county. The quasi-judicial procedures set forth in the code shall be followed for the review and approval of major modifications. Minor modifications, as established in section 22-65 of the code, may be authorized administratively by the planning director. A violation of this permit shall be a violation of the code, and the special use may be revoked by the Board of Commissioners. Special use approval shall be revoked for any substantial department from the approved specifications, plans, or specifications, or refusal or failure to comply with the requirements of any development regulations, state law delegated to Dare County for enforcement purposes, or for false statements made in securing the special use permit. The same process for approval of a special use permit, including notice and hearing, shall be followed in the revocation of a special use permit. All other terms and provisions of the Dare County zoning ordinance shall remain in full force and effect, except as herein specifically permitted as otherwise. So you now have the facts that were presented and evidence, you have the, the conditions that we are authorized to make or that the applicant has consented to. You all have to decide if they've met their burden of proof to meet the conditions of the ordinance, and if you decide that they have met that burden of proof, then you're required to approve the special use permit. If you find that they have not met that burden of proof, then you are required to, to disallow the permit, but you have to also indicate which findings and which issues they did not meet in, in order to deny the permit.
Thank you, County Manager. I will turn it over to the board now to ask.
Chairman Woodard?
Yes?
Chairman Woodard? Yeah, this is Jim Tobin. I need to recuse myself on this because I was not at the first quasi-judicial portion of this, so I can't vote on it.
Absolutely, that's correct, as I will ask the board to approve that recusal.
So move some.
Motion by Commissioner Couch, seconded by Commissioner House, for Commissioner Tobin to recuse himself. Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I will defer to the board individually with respects to if the applicant has met those requirements, and if there are any additional conditions that you would entertain.
I have no conditions.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
No.
Okay, myself, none. Commissioner House?
The only thing I wanted to bring up again was, we had talked about it during the, the hearing, was the possibility of doing a residential sprinkler system in these units, and I'm just wondering if, if any, if he had done any research on that and felt that that would be an acceptable solution?
I recall it being 22.
That was for a bigger unit than what he was.
Thirty percent increase in the cost of the house. I'm thinking back to the minutes from the quasi-judicial testimony and evidence presented. Is that inaccurate?
I don't remember the, the numbers, but if the fire code doesn't require, and the building code doesn't require, and our zoning ordinance does not require it, then we don't have the authority to make him do it. So if he was going to do that, he'd have to consent to that.
Bobby, is that something that could be, when the, when the planning board takes this up, this issue up again, that is something that could be added?
No, I think so.
No, that's, that's relative to what we're about to discuss in June.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Answer is yes. Any? When you notice that, you're going to get public comment, and you'll have the opportunity then to craft a zoning ordinance however you want it at that time.
Got you.
All right. Commissioner Ross?
I don't have any issues with the evidence as presented. I just heard one thing tonight that gave me pause, so I guess I'm asking a question. Will owners or full-year renters be required to walk 300 yards to deposit a bag of trash into a dumpster?
They will be required to walk to where, I don't have the site plan, to wherever the dumpster is, and if that's 300 yards, then, then the answer is yes.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, there are other subdivisions that are like that. I mean, Martin's point, that their dumpsters are, they have to go more than that, a mile or more, to get to the dumpster, so that's not unusual.
Okay, thank you. I have no other issues, yep.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Not from, not from me, no, sir.
All right, then I need. All right, then I need to know what the pleasure of the Board is with respects to the village at Old Wolf Road Cluster Home Development Special Use Permit Application Number 3-2023.
I move to approve the special use permit.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the Special Use Permit Number 3-2023. Is there a second?
Second down here.
There's a second by Commissioner Couch.
Chairman?
Those...
Could you add to the motion that we find the facts and the conditions as I read so that we have a proper order?
Yes, and I will add, I'll yield to the maker of the motion.
Yes, please do add that to the motion.
And the second?
Doesn't change.
Okay. With that being said, the floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then do you have something?
After the Vice Chairman, please.
Go ahead, but...
Mr. Willis was spot on our respective years, and I did take an oath, and that oath is to affirm and uphold the laws of the United States. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to address just a couple of things. One is, is that when these, this change was made for cluster homes, I don't think anybody anticipated the kind of density that is being proposed for this development. That was certainly not anticipated by anybody. And that is one of the primary reasons that we want this to go back to the Planning Board to better define what a cluster home development should look like going forward in Dare County, should they come back with recommendations. Certainly, that's going to be, going to be one of them. The thing that's, the other thing was that there was a lot of professional evidence that was presented at the meeting on all of the items that have been brought up at the last meeting and at this meeting as well, and they were dealt with by the professionals in those fields, and they were, they were not challenged by anyone else who was a professional in those fields. So we kind of have a burden of presuming that, that those, that they're right. So, and the other thing is, the only thing that's hanging right now is the ability to get the permits that will be done. I think all those permits are through the state, so those will have to be done regarding wastewater, regarding sewage, and that sort of thing. So that's where we are, and having to base the decision solely upon the professional evidence that was presented, that's kind of where we find ourselves. So that's, I just wanted to kind of get that, get that stated.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to mirror the Vice Chairman's comments. Obviously, when we took this on for a tax amendment, I had no idea that somebody would come up with 60 units on 10 acres. That was just beyond my fathom. I've always seen, like I said, there's a cluster home right down the road from my house, and there's 40 units on four acres. I never thought that anything like this would come in, because usually like on a 10 acre property, if somebody wants to build multiple housing, it's going to be like an apartment complex or something like that. And if an apartment complex would have gone on this site, then you're talking about over twice as many units. So, like I said, I never thought that anything like this would come in. But we do have a housing issue in Dare County, as, even as y'all have stated. And I don't think a lot of people know the true depth of it. And busting is a great idea for our nonessential workers. There's a firefighter here in Dare County. He's living in a garage. Not an apartment underneath a house, not even approved living area, but a garage, because that's the only housing he could find. Now, the thing about that is, with firefighter and EMS personnel, they're subject to call in even when they're off duty. And I even asked him, if this were an option for you, would you look into it? And he said, most definitely. I said, now, this is also an area that has volunteer fire department. Would you be also willing to join that volunteer fire department to help them out? He said, absolutely. And I've always known the people of Wanchees to be a community that comes together and helps their fellow man. New Bern during the hurricanes was wiped out. A lot of our guys took their own boats, not knowing what was in the water, but took them food and medical supplies. That's the Wanchees I know. But like I said, I had no idea that this type of a development would go in, but like I said, we are at the point to where we can only base it on what has been presented to us in evidence. And that's all I have.
Is that it, Mr. House?
That's it.
Do you have anything, Mr. Ross? There's a motion on the floor for those in favor. The motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously with the five members of the Board that are eligible to vote. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item 12 on the agenda. That's a report of the sale of the 2023 Limited Application Bonds, and Dave Clausen's here for that presentation.
I will call the meeting back to order.
Okay. As you know, on April the 20th, we sold the bonds for the EMS projects, and I'll keep this short and sweet, but we needed $43,336,000 for the projects. We sold the bonds at a premium. Idea is that if, let me go to a different page. Now, just doing this for this very first line as an example, we had $1,950,000...
Where do you want us to look, Dave? On that schedule?
Very top line, very top line.
Okay, I was on page 25.
I used the 2025 as an example.
What page are we going on here before you get ahead of us? Page 29?
It's page six of the numbers run...
Well, I know, that's where I was, Danny, but I don't see that on the board, so I'm not sure where Dave would like us to go.
Sorry, I don't have the agenda.
Okay.
But just quick, we had $1,950,000 of bonds to sell. In the market today, the...
31, Ross. 31, thank you.
The institutional investors wants a 5% coupon payment. To get that, they had to pay us, just as one example, 4.6, 4.644% higher than the par amount of the bonds. So for selling $1,950,000 of bonds, we received proceeds of $2,040,558. The other thing we did that I wanted to point out is, after the bond sale, at about 11:45 that same day, we bid out the construction fund, and this was the first one in North Carolina that had been done in 13 years, because interest rates have been so low, it doesn't, it never made any sense to try to do it. But we locked in a rate of 4.77% for the 14 months. The construction fund will be outstanding. That meant that we borrowed, we issued $1,185,000 less of bonds. The sale, and I'm just going to show you this very quickly, this is the software that the...
Can't see that, Dave. We're going to another page? I'm just trying to follow...
This isn't in your, this is not in your agenda. So this is the software that they used the day of sale for our sale date. Each of those bars represents how many orders you had for each maturity of the bonds. The black line toward the bottom is how much was available to be sold. So you had 127.5 million of orders for $37 million of bonds. Another thing real quickly is, you had a wide variety of orders from, I found out an SMA account, which is the green, is a privately directed, kind of a mutual fund account, but it's privately owned. So you had private orders, bond funds, where's the next highest? You have broker dealers, broker dealers for their proprietary trading, and then the red is what the, our underwriters took for their own inventory. And on the names, a good range, but a pretty good amount of good names on there. Eaton Vance, Blackrock, Goldman, Sterling, Wells Fargo, Namine, JP Morgan. All that said, two other things. This is, this is the confidential copy, but it's not, it's been released, but the, this is the Moody's scorecard. The one I want you to pay attention to is the next to the bottom line, which says Corecard Indicated Outcome. So by their metrics, we were AAA rating. The assigned rating was the AA1 or the AA+. The mitigating factors they cited were mainly, let's see, up here at the top, right there. Resident income ratio, all of your income ratios are higher relative to the state than this number, but they take into account cost of living and adjust it by that. So they said our ratios are actually below the peer group. The other thing they noted was long-term liabilities, which is the local, they cited and mentioned the local government employees retirement system pension liability that's gotten larger over the last few years. But all that said, it was a successful sale. Our ending interest rate was the true interest cost of 3.446%. We had used 4.25% in the model, so we're about $364,000 less average per year than what we had put into the plan, and about $65,000 of that came from...
But what would you, I'm sorry, Dave, I thought you said 3.25 or something in the model, in the true interest?
4.25. 4.25 in the model.
4.25, thank you.
Yeah, and we issued a 3.45.
Right.
Plus borrowed a million, almost a million two less. And about $65,000 of that, $364,000 was the interest earnings on the bid of the investment contract. And that's, that's it.
Can you go back to that previous slide one real quickie?
Yes.
Nope. Nope.
Shoot, closed them. Oh, God. Closed them all out. Let's see.
That's all right, keep moving. It's all right.
Okay. No, but that's, that's it for that item. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the sale, and we had about seven times orders than what we had available. It went really well again. And Piper and PNC went, did a good job as you usually do.
The good news is, Commissioner Ross and I had a conversation about this this afternoon, is that our good bond rating and our good credit rating and our healthy budget and all those things allowed us to sell these bonds at a premium. We had a net interest rate reduction, and the upshot of all that is, is that in our capital improvement plan, we'll have some more cash available, if you will, to do other things with or do those things quicker because of the savings that we're able to create by getting such a good deal on these bonds. So it's a benefit to the county, and it's one of the things, when we talk about bond ratings and why they're so important, there it is. That's what it is, right there.
Thank you. Thank you, County Manager.
Okay. The next item, item number 13, is a budget amendment for the bond sale. What we're doing is adjusting the amount of the debt proceeds down, we're increasing the re-offering premium, we're recognizing that we've got interest earnings on the construction fund. I'm adjusting to actual, the cost of issuance expense, and then there were two misses on a schedule that I'm correcting out of each of the project's contingencies, and the grand total for the projects does not change. So this is ask for questioning you to adopt an amendment to the capital project ordinance for the EMS station project.
Move to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to adopt. Is it seconded by Commissioner Couch? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So that brings us to item 14 on the agenda. This is a resolution supporting the Lost Colony. Would you like me to read this, Mr. Chairman?
If you would, let me just give you a little background.
Sure.
The rehires looking to, for the legislature to try to help them with a one-time donation from the state to help them with some facilities issues. And so this resolution supporting the Lost Colony will certainly go in their packet, and the tourism board's doing the same to help show our support for them through the legislature. County Manager, if you will read that.
All right. Whereas Lost Colony has been the Outer Banks' most prominent heritage tourism attraction for 85 years, and whereas summer productions of the Lost Colony at the Waterside Theater on Roanoke Island have entertained millions of visitors, and whereas the mission of the Roanoke Island Historical Association is to celebrate and depict the first English settlement in America on Roanoke Island and the birth of the first English child on these shores, and whereas the Lost Colony, based on a screenplay by North Carolinian Paul Green, first was performed in 1937 in the depths of the Depression, and Franklin D. Roosevelt was among those who viewed the production that summer, and whereas the show has been performed continuously for 85 years, interrupted only by World War II and the COVID epidemic, and whereas the Lost Colony should be an important part of our nation's 250th anniversary celebration in 2026, whereas we eagerly anticipate the 100th anniversary of the Lost Colony in 2037, just 14 years from now, and whereas the Lost Colony remains a vital and valuable part of the life and history of our community, Dare County, and the entire Outer Banks. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere thanks and appreciation to the Board Directors of the Roanoke Island Historical Association for its hard work, and we pledge our continuing support for the Lost Colony. This is the first day of May 2023.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
sincere thanks and appreciation to the board directors of the Roanoke Island Historical Association for its hard work, and we pledge our continuing support for the Lost Colony. This is the first day of May two thousand twenty-three.
Move to adopt the resolution, Mr. Chairman. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to adopt the resolution, it's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, you have the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have the tax collector's report, you have the courthouse computer systems software licensing and support agreement, the Dare County Disaster Debris Management Contract, DEQ cost share for the Miss Katie twenty-three, twenty-four dredging, and the DEQ cost share for the Walker slough and the crack. On the, number three, the courthouse computer systems, I need to add some language recommended for all of our contracts with regard to cybersecurity. We started doing that, and they were not included in these, so if you approve that, it would be contingent upon adding of that cybersecurity language.
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion
Second.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that raises to your board appointments. You have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the five members have agreed to be reappointed for another term. Robert Trevette, Vance Haskett, Gail Hutchinson, Amber Yount, Stephanie Webb, Steve House, Sarah Sampson, Sheila Davies, Catherine Irby, and Marcus Hester Smith.
Move to reappoint and to appoint Amber. Is it a need, a nod?
No.
As school superintendent appointee, and appoint Jennifer Wooton as member of the public representing families of at-risk juveniles.
Second. There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Roberman got ahead of me there.
He did.
Next is the Dare County Waterways Commission. Michael Flynn and K.P. Scott III have agreed to be reappointed for another term.
Move to reappoint Michael Flynn and K.P. Scott.
Second.
And, yes.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Library Board. The Library recommends the reappointment of Urban Bateman and Janice Willis.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman, it's been seconded by
Ross.
Commissioner Ross.
I'm looking for Commissioner Bateman, he's still in absent.
He's recusing to the max.
Yeah, he is, he's recusing through the board appointments.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Your upcoming board and committee appointments in June, you have the Hatters Community Center Board with three terms, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with twelve terms, the Land Transfer Tax Bill Board with three terms, the Library Board for Dare with two terms, the Roanoke County Community Center Board with three terms, the Transportation Advisory Board with one term, and the Water Race Commission with three terms. In July, you have the Airport Authority with four terms, the East Lake Community Center Board with one term, the Game and Wildlife Commission with four terms, and the Wannchee's Community Center Board with five terms. In August, you have the ABC Board with two terms, the Jury Commission with one term, and the Virginia Estillat Community Center Advisory Board with five terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
On the juvenile crime prevention future, where am I at, upcoming? We just appointed twelve vacancies on that board this, at this meeting. Is there another twelve coming vacant in June? The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
That's a big board.
It is. You've got thirty-some members.
It's a very full and thirty-eight.
So it's just, okay, because I counted and there were twelve that we approved, and I saw twelve, and I thought it might be, okay.
When school gets out, the juvenile members of the board go out as well, so there's should be a number of reappointments.
That's, that's a big game.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, okay. You, I stand corrected.
All right, that brings us to item seventeen, Commissioners' business. Commissioner Ross, do you mind kicking this off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, the house is empty, but hopefully someone's listening. On the fourteenth of this month, the Roanoke Island Historical Association hosted a Vintner's reception in the evening before the annual Lost Colony Wine Festival as a fundraiser for our Lost Colony play. And I just wanted to point out and thank Ms. Susan Fearing for her efforts on behalf of that board I attended, and it was truly an outstanding evening, so thank you, Susan. May tenth, two P.M., EMS Station Number One will have a groundbreaking ceremony. I glanced at our Public Relations Director to confirm that I've got the date and time and station correct. She is giving me affirmative nod, so I'm going with yes. On the twenty-third, our local SPA shelter hosted a Bark in the Park. That's right, ladies and gentlemen, Bark in the Park, and had a great turnout. It was held at Jockeys Ridge State Park, and several hundred people showed up. Our own, our own group from the shelter was there, and it turned out to be a very big event. I was over there to volunteer for a few hours, sold some lottery tickets, and we raised a lot of money for the shelter. And the last thing, I would ask you to turn your television dials to NBC on Saturday, May sixth, at about six P.M. The Greatest Two Minutes in Sport will take place this Saturday at Kentucky Derby.
I was ahead of you on that, I saw it coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past Saturday, Commissioner Bateman and myself had the pleasure and absolute honor to be at the Special Olympics, to hand out medals to those amazing athletes. The games are just astonishing. The camaraderie and the love and the, and the, just the, the, the whole day was just unbelievable of how well these, these athletes compete and how much they care for their fellow athletes. There were some out there that were actually helping the others as they were running their race. I mean, it was, it was just phenomenal.
Thank you, Steve, that is, you and I, that's the best, man.
That was, that was awesome.
Thank you.
It really was, I could not, I just could not believe it. Division of Marine Fisheries. They're having a, they're trying to get a new program started, and this has to do with the anchored gill net fisheries. Used to, the way it is now, is you would go out and set your nets and an observer would call, observer from the Marine Fisheries would, would call and set up an appointment with you to go out and inspect your nets and all this stuff. They're trying to change that program now to where if I'm a gill netter, anchor gill netter, I have to call Division of Marine Fisheries, let them know what day I'm going out so that they can have an observer go with me. So now you're going to have Big Brother watching you. And so it's a situation where you have to call every time a week in advance.
The Thursday before the week.
The Thursday before.
So you better be a good weatherman.
Exactly.
Right, I got daughters.
And so right now, they're taking public comment all up and down the coast. The closest one to us is going to be on May ninth at the Hatters Community Building in Hatters. So I'll urge all of our gill net fisheries to go and speak to them.
Be good hands down there.
Yeah, exactly. And also, I wanted to point out, you remember a few meetings ago, I asked for a resolution which we adopted and sent off, was for a step pay plan for the juvenile crime. House Bill eight forty-eight, it was been entered into the House to put the step pay plan in motion. The Senate has already has it in their budget. And so both houses, both parts of the House look like it's going to be favorable to go through into the budget, so our representatives rallied, I talked with all them, and they thanked, thanked us again for sending support for it. So I just wanted to pass that on to you, some good news. Our day in history, the Empire State Building opened up its doors on this day in nineteen thirty-one. And what's really amazing is that entire building was built in fourteen months.
Cost per square foot seventeen dollars.
Outrageous.
And I mean, you know, it's, it's hard for us to even get a small building built these days in fourteen months.
Get a permit in fourteen months.
Exactly. So I mean, that's, that's just unreal.
It is unbelievable.
And the Empire State Building was the tallest building in the world, in the United States until, I think it was seventy-one, when the Empire State Buildings went up.
Twin Towers.
Or the, Twin Towers, sorry. And on another good part of news, which we always like to see at our Commissioners' meetings, meet Talon.
Our pet of the week this week is Talon. Talon was
Look at that play yard, look at that giant grass play yard.
We've loved getting to know Talon.
Where did that come from?
He has the best personality. He's super playful and loves everyone. This spunky boy would make a great addition to any family ready to take on a seven-month-old. Give us a call if you would like to set up a doggy.
Jumping around. Reminds me of the vice chairman jumping around like that.
To adopt Talon or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Pretty dog.
So definitely Talon's looking for a forever home, so please go down to the SPCA and hook him up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Joseph Vesely and Tim White for their twenty-five years combined service. Both of them, great employees, both of them do a great job. Also like to congratulate Kay White, Pamela Donahue, and Patricia Burexus for their Governor Awards for volunteer service. And as always, Dare County is, is a special place for volunteering, and these folks are evident of that. Commissioner Ross mentioned the Lost Colony Wine Festival that he attended on Friday night. I took care of them on Saturday.
Covered, thank you.
Went out and they had, they had, I would say, great, great food, good wines, and a fantastic turnout out there at, at the Lost Colony. And it was, it was a cool thing to, to, to go to. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir, thank you. Past handful of meetings been really stressful, I'm just grateful for some closure. Because of the fact that we've had some heavily, a lot of information, a lot of things to process in the past handful of meetings, I've been unable to bring to the attention of our citizens the loss of some outstanding people here in the past three months. Want to start with Ben O'Neill down in Ocracoke. You might say you don't know him, but the truth is, you did. He drove fish truck for years for Murray, he faltered, he had his hands and everything. He was genuine, genuinely one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. I never, ever saw that man lose his temper. He treated everybody like he'd known you your whole life and was just a little bit of a difficult one to take. Dave Kelmer, I know y'all recognize that name from Methodist Men, he was a, very much an anchor, very much a glue. He hung on for a long time, he was a retired Marine, and he had a way of combining compassion for people. There, we, some of the comments tonight about the haves and have-nots, it's true, we have a lot of have-nots, well, he had a heart for have-nots, and just, we're going to miss him terribly on that board. Beldon Gray from Avon, he was a longtime Coast Guardman, he'd been suffering for a while, his kids are all friends, is all out of my generation there, and just wonderful kids. He, he had a genuine, they talk about how Ocracoke has a brogue, and Wannchee's too, yes, as well, but he, he had a Hatters brogue. Hatters had a brogue for years now, with the kids in the high school, within the schools were kind of losing it, but he was one of the last, and that I'm aware of, there may be a handful or more that had that true Hatters brogue. Ray Gray, those of you who are familiar with Board Education, I'm talking about our citizens, I know this entire board is, he retired a few years ago, he passed. He had a bad accident on vacation and never fully recovered. Ray Gray Senior, Ray Dale Gray, he was a longtime principal in Dare County Schools. He was in schools up here as well, kind of like when Superintendent Bassnight was filling in as a principal on loan, Ray did that for years. You know, there's two Punk Daniels, and being somebody who made troll boat trips when I was trying to figure out what I wanted to do out of college, I found out pretty quick that life wasn't for me. But I was well familiar with the Captain Malk, and that was kind of Punk's boat. Punk Daniels from here in Manio was a longtime coach, but there's also Punk Daniels over there to Wannchee's and
There are two Punk Daniels?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Why not?
Yeah. Different, 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 Punk here was a diplomat, Punk and Wannchee's was kind of like Mac Midget inclined to settle things with his fists, and that, that is an honorable attribute, I had seen him in action. I'll just leave that.
Commissioner Tobin found that one humorous.
Yeah, I mean, he already did.
It is funny.
Yeah. Jim, we'll get to you here, indulge me here for a minute, I know you have some things. Coach Kahoon, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but we knew him as well. You know, when I was in high school, we would come up and watch some football games, and he was just an amazing guy. I mean, he was a heck of a coach, and he, he would just, they would pound you, they would, Manio for years, I mean, even going back, well, maybe not as far back as RV and Scarborough, I can't, I just, his name just flew out of my, my head, Jasper, Jasper Scarborough, I actually live in Collington. Manio was state champs that year, Manio had a run there where they were in the state playoffs in the seventies, and Coach Kahoon was very much a part of that. And then we lost a gentleman, Gary Austin, passed a couple, he was eighty-nine. The neat thing about Gary, he was old Coast Guardman, very set in his ways, very stubborn, you could not move him, he was true to his word, his kids were just wonderful, he had four girls and one son, he's got, they've got all wonderful in-laws, not all of them are in Hatters anymore, but you know, the Austons go back to the Blackbeard days back there. One of the neat things about Gary is, his father was Lawrence Lee Austin, who was Billy Mitchell, who proved the superiority of air power nineteen twenty-three, was, Gary's father was his go-to guy, and there's still some artifacts that the Austin family has relative to Billy Mitchell when he was down there. A lot of people say, well, you know, Mitchell was here because the conditions were right. No, he was here because the fishing was right, and that's why he did his tests here. Last but not least, well, you know what? That's a lot, so I'll leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Actually, Danny, there's another one too, that I failed to mention as well, a few weeks back, that Susan West.
Oh, yes, yeah.
A big advocate for our commercial fishermen.
She was highly intelligent, yeah, irreplaceable.
I'll tell you one, one of the things that's astounding, you said that was twenty-three to Billy Mitchell something. You know, twenty years after the Wright Brothers flew the first heavier than aircraft, they were using planes to sink battleships.
It's unreal.
It's unbelievable.
Here, here's another little known fact about, there was a Japanese attache, a guy named Lieutenant Yusama Nagano, who was down there in Hatters, he became Admiral Yusama Nagano, who planned the attack for Hirohito on Pearl Harbor, he was there.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, well, thank you, Danny.
Yes, I thank y'all.
Commissioner Tobin, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
It's all yours, brother.
All right, I, first and foremost, I'd just say how good it is to be back, even if it is just verbally.
It's good to have you, hey, good to have you, you got that right.
And I've been lucky enough to be able to get my chemo regime changed to Tuesdays, which it was, they were all on Mondays, so you know, when you get chemo, you kind of have chemo fog for a couple days, and I just, it was impossible to be a commissioner at those points, but, but I'm back, I've got a change to all, all Tuesdays in the future. And speaking of that, I'd kind of like to, the only other thing I'm going to say, I'd kind of like to address the lady who pointed me out by name and insinuated that I wasn't there because of pointed me out by name and insinuated that I wasn't there because of the vote tonight.
Jim? I could offer my thoughts. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's such a falsehood and quite, I'm, I'm pretty upset about it. I mean, currently, as we speak, I'm on radiation therapy and chemotherapy. Tomorrow I go in for another dose of chemotherapy. My, my radiation therapy is a one-time deal and I'm done with that, but I'm still under the effects of it. But for the next ten weeks, I will still be taking chemotherapy. So I started the first week of January. That's a long time to take chemo. And it's a very aggressive chemo because I've got a very aggressive cancer, but I feel like it's working. I'm, I know my mind and my body feel a lot better than they did, so I, I think it's working. But, you know, a lot of people sat up there and asked for apologies from the board. I think I'm deserved an apology too.
Yep, absolutely.
Jim, your concerns are well-founded.
Don't stress.
Yeah.
Fully justified.
I mean, it's just unbelievable.
It was outrageous.
And you know what? With that said, she probably didn't know that I've got cancer. So, you know, I'm giving her the benefit of the doubt, but still. Don't throw darts unless you know what the target is.
Amen.
It didn't, it didn't dignify a response, Jim, but I understand how you feel.
Yep. I love all you guys and I'm trying, I'm trying to get permission. Right now, they're still saying I can't go out in public, but right now I'm trying to get permission from my doctor up at Duke to allow me to go to in person to Commissioner meetings. I might have to wear a mask or whatever, but you know how, how I am with masks.
Jim Tobin in a mask. That one's good. I'm looking at Steve.
I was hoping he'd soften a little bit.
Jim Tobin in a face mask.
Jim, the main thing is you just need to take care of yourself and you need to, you need to follow the doctor's rules and, and listen. We, we, all of us are praying every single day for your recovery. So you don't worry about the, the, this stuff here.
Well, thank you. And I love, love all you guys. I can't wait to be back in person.
Yeah, Jim, Jim, just focus on getting better. You do you. We got this. That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Jim. We're glad, glad you won this evening. Bobby, do you have anything else for us?
Two things briefly. One is, we had a request to change the public hearing for the number eleven, for the zoning change to five o'clock. And so if we do that, y'all have to, y'all made a motion before to, to do it at the next meeting.
Right.
Do, if we can do it on the seventeenth, do you want to do it at five o'clock on the seventeenth as well?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So somebody make a motion to
Second.
Is it? Before we do that, guys, I'm going to make sure I can, I'm not saying I can't, I'm just.
Is the seventeenth a Monday?
No.
No, it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. You need a motion?
Yeah, motions for either date at five o'clock.
So moved.
So it's that Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
A, a motion to have a public hearing at five o'clock, whether we do it on the seventeenth or on the, we don't know which date we're going to do it yet. All right. Okay. The second thing is, I need you all to give me the authority to do a budget amendment for the loan forgiveness on the dredge. Dave has to budget that into our books before the timing doesn't work out when we get the numbers of how much they've saved us so that he can calculate the forgiveness doesn't hit right where we can get it into the budget. So I need authority to put that number in the budget when, whenever that occurs, either before or after the budget, so that we can make sure our budget is correct and reflects. It has no impact on county dollars. It's just a bookkeeping thing that Dave has to do. And so I need that.
Yep, so moved.
So it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Dave, did you have something to add?
No, it says for this year.
For, for this year's, yeah, right.
Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. Public Information Office and Ms. Hester, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Our Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else?
No, no, sir.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn until May the seventeenth at five P.M.
So moved.
Motion on the floor is this second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chairman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries unanimous. Yes? Did Jim say anything?
Yeah.